One. We start with three months. Would. Alright. Thirty four. The decision is to pass this thing. And the number one. Books that have a phone call. Then both and the country. Questions. Tonight, we will have a bed. Five, eight, four, thirty, and fifty, the right to make your sign right. Up to the ground. And we will do to do the meeting agenda. He is accompanied by a couple of staff for our title star for our cabinet. And question, our beginning of the year, the common thing time and also to be the. Our set. There are people. I'm replying. Part of the whole. He's on the head. Right, just like. Um. For now, she's on her car. And thank you. So he would have been employed. At my next practice, it is a good reference. I. And there's a virtue of. Are we in here from Saint Troy? Our chief financial officer. And that part, I as also, um, I didn't find. It's very important here in Saint Thomas. I actually report, he started to talk about his status on the line. Next, the issue. Um, well, and she, they, you know, she has that. And then, um, don't remain quiet and. Uh, right, that's not. How pretty, how different, same house, he's out this way. And our community, I think, are. So those that friends and junior. And they're not forget our values, even that, um, yeah. Of, uh, and, um, thank you for the question. They are part of our financial team. So, uh, see from the Lucy. We have a lot of, yeah, that's the right. These parts. And the master question. I guess, um, we're up to see what. What is, um, those woman. I have no opinion person. And outside, it wasn't. And what. Our signage. When I get that. And I'll put the.
We need you for asking, uh. In. Um. Question. Don't blame. Um. Uh, we giving. Give. Uh. Uh. Of. Um. It. Uh. What. Um. So. Thank you all. It can't hear in the board.
There's so much.
Same time. Uh. But I said, um. We would have. But you. It do them. We don't. So. Yeah, um. Very possible. What I feel.
What changed, uh, what changed on this?
What's. What the comment you got with this? What's the issue? Uh, what's going on?
Yeah. Uh, uh. Yeah. Uh, with it, I might get to another break with the man. All. And. Yeah. Uh. Here. Yeah. About that. Three, three. So another. I'm gonna hear this one thing. This one option. Rather than why you will come into. Uh, the Dambura, Dambura. Right, me. Beginning of the gender. The Bible. And we. And the. Well, that's. Really do that's. Twenty. That really. I love it, yeah, yeah. I'm. He, yeah, uh. I'm not, I can't, you know, through the elements, after you. You're trying to do the ritualism. It's around to me. I. But you come to know my place, uh. Uh, great. But I notice. Volume for this is down. I need to come. The computer, uh, computer. And. So what you, what you do right now? You're using, um, number two. Getting, uh, to beat. This one. Yeah. You were, um, you're sure probably just sound. My time, it's just, it's only a good. You lost. I forgot what's on. Was that my line, can I? Before it was. I think we're. Oh, he's still. I'm not gonna go to. So you want to come over here. Uh. Cause in this. This is the voice of. Um, again. Um. Who is in the screen panel since the boat. Uh. In that single. Ready. Do you think? What did that one? Like the video. That's the proof, right? So I'm, those settings you're trying to get up. Uh. I hope it's come over here. Uh. Well, I mean, uh, this. By the. No, but I'm not a version. Well. Some of these videos. I think I said some. By your.
You know, I, Rush, what are you talking about, Mike?
Yeah, this is nine.
No, they can hear us. Happy birthday to me.
Sweet. What, uh, you. That's this making. So. Well.
Okay.
So we just change in my mind. So. Where for? Where we do. Where we do. We make. Actually. There. Is a input. It's really, I mean, several times. That's why I play. I try to do that. But. What do I get? I mean, this, we didn't make it, I put in some, that she is showing, well, yeah, well, uh. That she's a brother. There is a reason. I didn't. But enough. I'm waiting, uh, wait a time. We'll get a couple of things, uh. I think to me, I, I achieve my sense of the training. Yeah. I wanna change the saying. Yeah. Um. Hey, what's in, um. Have worked, uh. What is on? I look at you, shit. They. During all of this, they were. If it's, you know, seeing that food, so I'm correct. We have a problem, so my rights. Go from busy. Um. Let me speak, uh, as the. And each of them, I'm. Why just do this part? Yeah, I'm, I'm pitching to my government. But I'm pitching to my government. But. I'll change it very fast, but the beat quicker. Reason, uh, I mean, okay, we think Swiss words. The wine island. Some of them. I'm not flying. They're from. For. Um, the. I have seen. Um, um. This can be. Right, right. And. On any. After we.
Is, um, uh, that. Currently, in the, uh, the sewer, the sewer marine facility, commonly called the creek. We have some, uh, design work going on there for structural repairs. That's where, like, the BVI traffic comes in, in St. John's stop there. Or sometimes, in that area, is where the water to operations that take place from, let's say, St. Thomas and go up. Or the mini crew ships that stop in St. John. That's where they, uh, traverse. That, that area, um, of, of the dock is what we're discussing. If one would go in the area of that dock, you would find that. Uh, that whole area is so shallow that vessels can't really safely berth in that section of the creek. Some of the marine capital projects that we expect to engage in, in St. Thomas. The cargo, the co- the Kung Bay cargo terminal improvement, projecting to start. The quarter, the first quarter of twenty twenty six. That projected cost of that project. What we have in grants was twenty one point eight million dollars. And a five point four million marching fund. And just like we talk about our relationship and working together with Tropical and Crowley. The Port Authority, at that time, did not have, nor do we, did we wanted to put up five million dollars to do that project. So we were able to partner with Tropical and Crowley. So that matching fund was paid for, we wanted to do the project and get off going as quickly as we can. But that was paid for, um, at least a matching part, the five point four million dollars by those two private sector folks. That's why five point four million dollars doing that full money. It's money that the authority have to pay back down the road. Where, or the only, um, the important thing with this is that. We didn't have to come up with an entire five point four million dollars one time. The Ormond V Frederick's terminal in Red Hook. We expect to do some roof and guttering repairs. Up, up, updated the design, we've expected to update the design for the US custom facility. Uh, one knows, if you come from the BVI, you now have to stop in St. John. Sometimes that could take you two, three hours before you could clear. I had, I tell people, at times it's easier or quicker to take a flight for two and a half hours to Miami. Than at times to clear from the BVI with hundreds of passengers coming off. And one have to wait there until everybody disembark. There would be no closure to the, uh, to the CBP operations, uh, in, uh, in, um, in close. But what we, um, would be doing with this project is allowing for folks to come down. Directly from the BVI and stop in Red Hook, thus getting off and moving forward. So that's a project that's been very active. We had designed it already, um, a few years ago. And we expect that, uh, we'll be doing a modification to the design so we could move the project forward. The Edward Wilmer Bliden Marine Terminal. That's how some people commonly refer to it as Tato La Waf. That's where a bulk of the traffic leaves from downtown, uh, in St. Thomas to the BVI. Uh, and sometimes they might leave from there to go to, uh, Cruzeby as well. The Charles F. Blair Seaplane Terminal, that's our seaplane facility of tongue. The Austin Babe Monson to Marine Terminal, that's, uh, our Kung Bay, uh, facility proper. That's a marine capital project in St. Croix, this is just a couple of them that we would, uh, would mention. The cargo facility matching funds that we received, some twenty two point four million dollars. Uh, is a federal grant against the US Department of Transportation. Uh, with a matching fund paid primarily by, uh, Tropical Shipping. They are the one who up from that money on behalf of the Port Authority. Again, it's not free money. The Anuabimson Marine Facility, the catwalk and in, and, and structural repairs design is completed, we expect that to be going out to bed shortly. That catwalk areas when the cruise ship pull out and the, the pilots and support have to go. The walk on this is part metal, part concrete in the water. But that has deteriorated over the years and need to definitely be, uh, rebuilt. The Gallowsbury, uh, demolition in St. Croix, the entire Gallowsbury area. That's where the inter-island cargo, sometimes the gas, your fuel would go into Gallowsbury and then it's transported through the tongue, basically, to move on. The Port Authority developed a project in which we, uh, rebuilt, um, a new facility down at. The, what we call the Garden Finch Terminal, that's back at the south, that's on the south shore. And so that project that we built with brand new warehouses would now take all the folks that operated in Gallowsbury. And relocate them to the New Garden Finch, uh, Marine Terminal. And so we expect that we'll be demolishing all those facilities, all those old warehouses. And so that the facility we have in Gallowsbury can now be repurposed for other things. One of the things that we continue to toy with there, um, there was a time when the, uh, like Sea Dream and all those small vessels used to go into that area. But we, that's what we hoping to do and still make sure that whether it's mega yachts or whatever. But an entire area would be available for development and, um, some repurposing. The Port Authority, we have to keep on board, uh, marine consultants. And we had, um, a study done of all our port facilities on the marine side. And as a result of that study, this was basically what those findings were. And at least the facilities, for example, Austin Babe Monson to Marine Terminal was listed at fair. And, um. They, they, they work, whatever we have to do there, we expect to do that through Viper, which is Port Authority funding. Um, and the other facility we have at the Kung Bay Cargo Park, we spoke about that a little bit earlier. And, um, that's a Department of Transportation, Tropical and Crowley, and Viper participation, um, in that project. And all these projects, most of them that I'm listing out here, in a few minutes, you'll get to see from a picturistic standpoint. The conditions of some of these, uh, facilities and understanding the need for us to look at how we're going to finance these, these, um, projects. This, uh, Seaplane Terminal, Edward Wilmer Bliden Terminal, and you see the condition there listed, you have it in your, your handout as well. And in St. John, we know that the Lourdes Lawrence Boyne's Senior Dock is listed as in serious condition. And, um, you, again, you'll have the opportunity to see it and understand that the Port Authority have to do whatever to make sure that we could repair that. The Morehead Dock, which is where the barge is going, is satisfactory, Gallowsbury Marine Terminal. That's the facility I spoke about earlier, that's, um, looked at as being thorough. And this was, uh, entire assessment done by marines, engineers, surveyors, and this kind of thing that we keep on board. At this point, I'll, we'll go to the next one there. And now I'll take a quick seat and have one of our newest. And one of, uh, our engineers that. Young man who spoke to about coming down. Was a member of Ninety Six School of God. Now, when he left there, the Port Authority, like we have always done in the young people in our engineering department, will clear the authority. So we brought him back home, he's now a senior engineer at the authority, so he'll take you through, um, these slides. The Scottus.
All right. Thank you, Executive Director. Um, even everybody, German the Scottus, Senior Engineering Project Manager with Viper. Um, just wanted to take a deeper dive, um, into some of the issues that we have with our marine facilities. So as, um, the director showed on the previous slide, um, you know, the goal with, with that marine assessment was to. Get a comprehensive assessment of all of our facilities so that we can come up with plans and projects to rectify the issues that we have. Um, most of the facilities that we deal with are decades old and the marine environment is not easy on the facilities. It's costly work to be done and where it's a constant battle against the elements, corrosion, rust, as you see here. Um, and that's why it's gonna take some significant work, um, with our projects to keep our facilities going for decades to come. So since we completed the assessments, we've been fully engaged with our consultant on completing the designs. Um, so that we can get these projects rectified as soon as possible. Um, with the most serious, um, being the Lourdes and Boyne's, um, Junior Dock. You'll see here, um, we have a section of, of the, the waiting area that's been closed, um, for a period of time since we completed the assessment. Um, what you'll find under the dock or above the dock, we completed some renovations recently. And while things may look okay on the top side, um, you know, what we see on the, on the, the deck are a lot of structural issues. So we have just one area pictured here, um, but this is just a portion of what is typical, um, underneath the, the Lourdes and Boyne's Dock. It's going to be a challenging project to complete, um, but we're, you know, we're going to get it done. Um, if you look at the picture here, you'll see there's maybe about three feet or so of access that you have on there. So it's gonna be a very challenging project, it's going to take, you know, some talented contractors to get this work done. But we are fully engaged in, in getting that done and getting this dock reopened, um, for the public. Um, for that project too, there's also the two, um, dinghy docks, um, that also have similar issues. Um, once again, on the top side, you may wonder, you know, why, why the dock isn't in use. Um, but it's, it's, it's due to the structural issues on the, on the side. So we just have one typical picture of one of the piles that's failing because of the corrosion. Um, and if we don't rectify those issues, um, we're gonna have, you know, broader structural issues that will cause, um, problems for people's, um, vessels. Um, and their livelihood. Um, next, we have the Alma Victor Fredericks, um, facility in Red Hook. Um, as mentioned earlier, um, we do have a project in design currently to complete some renovations as well as build out. A better and more efficient facility, uh, for the customs operations at this dock. And then next, um, not exactly the marine structural issue, but we also wanted to highlight the necessity of the cranes for the cargo operations in the territory. Um, the one pictured here is at, at, at Container Port, um, in St. Croix. Um, that's operated by Tropical, but it's a Viper owned crane that needs to be replaced. Um, at this point, it's well over thirty years old and beyond its life expectancy. To the point where any failures unexpectedly, they don't make parts for this crane anymore. So any downtime is extended and it's a huge impact on unloading and offloading containers and critical goods in St. Croix. Um, we also wanted to just show that, you know, this, it's not cheap work, right? We estimate this crane in particular, um, the replacement to cost about seven million dollars. Uh, next, on St. Thomas, um, similar, a similar issue, we have, you know, a different type of crane here, three are pictured that are on the, the, in the Tropical, um, port. But we face the same issues, the, the cranes are very old, um, there are plans in place to replace the cranes. Um, but currently, whenever they have issues, there's a long downtime that impacts all the residents of the territory, not just in Thomas, but also the goods that leave St. Thomas and go to other places like St. John. Um, this is also a highlight of, of, um, Kung Bay Cargo, um, facility as well. Um, another project that is in design, um, the area pictured, um, we have been experiencing concrete spalling issues. Um, these are areas that are in use frequently every day. Um, the particular area on the right is where, um, a lot of our row rows pull up to unload our float cars and other cargo. And in the meantime, we have to come up with creative solutions, whether it's filling with some temporary material to allow those critical operations to continue to happen. Um, so once again, it's just a ex- excerpt of some of the issues that we found as part of our assessments, as well as what we continue to find on a daily basis here in the port. Um, it's going to take a significant effort, a significant amount of money to restore these facilities so that we have more of those facilities that are in the green. On that table that we saw earlier and so that we can continue to use these facilities for decades to come. All right. Next, moving on, thank you.
Thanks. One could say a lot. About the Port Authority. But this is what make me feel good. Yeah, young man like that. At Mark Myers. Christopher. So I really, you did excellent job, really appreciate. And that's what this is about, as well, building capacity, normally. If I. The islands ferry is on cruise ship tenders, you the crock in St. John to load this and disembark. This multi-purpose facility will need dredging in the near future. Kung Bay, the cruise excursion also have and disembark in Kung Bay and connect to the Western Company Dock. Cruise ship activity requires significant dredging. The cross plane Kung Bay St. Thomas accommodates the largest cruise ships in the world and play the critical, a crucial role in the United States of America's tourism sector and economy. However, this facility requires maintenance and dredging.
Thanks.
But. You're almost in another job today. Folks, I'm just kidding. Existing fees proposed by the amendments. Those adjustments to existing fees, and I want to, somehow we skip over the word proposed. And we forget it's a propose, we just say, this is what they're doing. Well, the reason we have in a discussion is because we expect to get feedback and see what adjustments or what might, might, we might be able to talk among ourselves and take to the board in the future. So anyhow, the, the Britain Virgin Islands Inter Island Passenger Warpage and Ship Due. Inter Island Passenger Ferry Service between the BVI and US Virgin Islands is charged passenger dues and warpage for the use of our harbor and. is charged a passenger dues and waftage for the use of our harbor and wharf premises under the control of the Virgin Islands Port Authority. These fees will last increase in twenty fourteen. The BVI inter-island passenger ship dues and waftage, that's the schedule there. And that's what we are contemplating. For example, the ship dues is currently at two dollars. We're proposing to take that to three dollars. The waftage inbound three dollars, take it up by a dollar to four dollars. The waftage inbound three dollars, that two to four dollars. So that total ship dues from the port standpoint would be eleven dollars from the port. And we have in that that corner there telling you that all of us, you know, if you travel enough that in the British Virgin Islands, when you leave there, it's twenty dollars to leave. Our fee would be three dollars.
Sorry?
Well, I'm not getting into all the environmental fees and so forth, the BVI charge. I'm just telling you straight up, where we will be at eleven dollars with this proposal in the British Virgin Islands, it'll be at twenty dollars. The docking fees that Viper supports, any vessel except cruise vessels berthing at any Viper owned wharf dock pair or bulkhead structure is currently charged one dollar per foot per twenty-four hour period. Viper will increase this fee to two thousand fifty cent per day. This fee was last increased eight years ago and is paid by all private and commercial vessels. Again, uh this fee is not paid by the cruise lines. The cruise lines have a special tariff away from this these fees that you're seeing here. The docking fees per each twenty-four hours, all Viper owned docking facilities, the measurements for running foot, the current is one dollar, the proposed is two dollars and fifty cent, ready? Oh, this other part of this presentation, Mr. Cranston will take you through the Marines manager.
Good evening again, uh my name is Joseph Cranston Junior, I'm the Marine Manager for the Saint Thomas Saint John District. Um this section of our proposed tariff reflects Section Three of our marine tariff, which includes pilotage. Um this impacts more of the larger vessels. Any vessel over one hundred gross ton is required to um take part in our pilotage process. Um this is more of the larger cargo vessels and the Crowley's and the priority row rows that come to the territory as well as some of the more expensive mega yachts and so. Um vessels within this, any vessel over a hundred ton, the pilot is required to ride along. Um sometimes there is a waiver giving granted that there is no hazardous materials onboard or the pilots and our staff deem that they do not need our assistance to come into the harbors. Um next slide, please. Okay, currently, this 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 fee is assessed by the draft of the vessel. The draft is basically from the waterline of the vessel to the lowest part of the vessel. Um our current rate is at twenty dollars with a minimum of fifteen feet. That that fee will increase to twenty-five dollars as proposed in the new tariff. Um a next part of this tariff is the, we charge basically one cent per gross ton. We're changing that way of calculating it and we're going to three sections, whereas any vessel from zero to nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine gross tons, that fee will be two hundred dollars for that vessel. Any vessel from twenty thousand gross tons to fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine gross tons, that fee will move on to four hundred dollars and anything of sixty thousand gross tons and over, their fee will be six hundred dollars. Along in the pilotage, we also charge a shifting fee, that is, anytime any vessels come to one berthing in the harbor or any ports that we control and they need to relocate for any reason, there's an additional fee, it's currently at three hundred dollars. The increase will carry that fee up to four hundred dollars. The one cent per ton gross ton, that fee will no longer be part of that um tariff. We also have a harbor usage fee, which is currently at one hundred dollars, that fee is gonna increase to hundred and fifty dollars. And any waiting time due for unreadiness by any of those vessels, the pilots usually charge them one hundred and fifty dollars currently, that fee is proposed to go up to two hundred dollars.
Thanks, uh Mr. Cranston, and just uh by the way of um just informational purposes, the harbor pilots, all the program for the harbor pilots, the folk that bring the vessels in, all those folks work for the port authority. So when you see a cruise ship coming in, it's a harbor pilot from the port authority that's bringing a vessel in. The same happens for all the cargo vessels and uh some of the mega yachts. And those large vessels and someone could elect uh like, for example, mega yachts or whoever could elect, well, um we want a waiver, we don't want a pilot on board. Not the cruise ships, not the cargo for the most part, but they could say that they don't want a pilot, but even if they don't want the pilot, they still um pays the pilot fee. And then sometimes you talk about the shifting in the harbor or the waiting time. Uh and from time to time, what could happen and just drawing a reference, one of the vessels could simply say um to the port authority, we're gonna be departing at um eight o'clock in the evening. This could happen, so that pilot toward the port that we are paying could go on duty to move that vessel and something can happen, whatever the issue might be, and they don't leave till, let's say, four hours later. But in the meantime, we, the port authority would be bearing a car. So that's just somebody knowns as in the of the business. The bad ramp fees in Saint Thomas, last fees were established nineteen years ago in twenty-six and have not been increased since implementation. So what that feels is primarily, somebody gets in the car leaving Saint Thomas, they go on the badge, going over to the badge, they did. The boot rider, you pay that. From the time nineteen years ago, it was three dollars to go on to the badge, on to for more property. And then you have the rate for pickups, SUVs, and it goes right down to the concrete trucks, the water trucks, the gas trucks, all these large equipment, and you see what the weight and what we are um proposing. But these are the, you know, these are the, some of the operators, the people that use our facilities and the consistent usage of uh the facilities, which is the weigh and tear and all these things. And that's primarily why we need to make sure that we could stay up and continue to improve on these uh facilities. Proposed adjustments to existing fees, um and be Frederick's Marine Parking Lat rates. Car uh current parking rates have been in effect since July twenty-seven of twenty twenty. Please note, any special rates previously approved will expire upon the effective date of these rates. And this, this is primarily the fee structure, it's coming more in line, we're thinking and bringing it more in line with what happens right here at the airport, that's it. Primarily two major parking areas we have, that's what we're trying to um bring it in line with. And um we've heard the discussion, this was robust discussion last night as to, you know, the fees and leaving Saint John and and so forth, but um we listen to them loud and clear and any adjustments, we'll um get with the group and see what we do. But the fact of the matter is, those fees that were, you know, for quite some time, we're trying to bring them in line with um with the airport as much as we can. And at the same time, a way for us to raise some revenue, so whether we go back to market, whatever we're gonna do to uh facilitate some of these same projects that you you um saw Mr. De Scartis mention. The parking lot fee collection, we thought we would share this um information here. In fiscal year twenty twenty, and that parking lot again, at Red Hook, we're talking about now in particular. That was constructed through a bank, we went out to the market um and we were able to get monies, not just for that project, for so for several other projects. And so those are monies that have to be repaid. And you could see now, you go to a parking lot on any given day, it's jammed, full of people. In twenty twenty, we were collecting four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. In twenty-one, it went up to six oh five, twenty twenty-two, six hundred and eighteen thousand. Fiscal year twenty-three, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Fiscal year twenty-four, five ninety-two, and FY twenty-five, to date, we're up to six hundred and thirteen uh thousand dollars. The red parking, we're going to the uh parking garage now, which in twenty twenty was six oh nine. Twenty-one was eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Twenty-two was nine hundred and ninety-six, twenty-two was nine ninety-six. Fiscal year twenty-four was one, one million fifty-two thousand. And FY to date was um is one million seventeen thousand and counting. The Saint John parking facility where they report was the gravel lot. When we started our facility, it um started out in twenty, we did seven thousand dollars, twenty-one, thirty-five thousand. Uh FY twenty-two, fifty-five, twenty-three, seventy-one, twenty-four, seventy, and FY twenty-five, eighty-eight thousand. And that combined show you the totals for each category um up to the up to the current of FY uh twenty-five. But those are the fees that use every day, like I said to, I said to folks all the time. The port authority overall have over three hundred and thirty-some employees. And again, we receive no allotment through the central government. So what we make is what we can spend for all what we do. The new fees proposed. Proposed Viper Marine fees and the and the cargo staging, cargo overflow staging fee. Vehicles under four hundred pounds in Thomas in Croix, twenty dollars per day. Vehicles four thousand pounds and over in Thomas and Saint Croix, fifty dollars per day. Heavy equipment in John, fifteen dollars per hour. Heavy equipment in Thomas, Saint Croix and Saint John, a hundred dollars per day. Twenty-foot containers or chassis, Saint John, fifteen dollars. Twenty-foot container of chassis in Thomas, in John, uh one hundred dollars, sorry, that was per hour, per day. Uh forty-foot container of chassis in John, twenty-five dollars per hour. Containers of chassis in Thomas, in John, Saint Croix, fifteen dollars per day. Fuel tankers under three thousand gallons, two hundred dollars, and the fuel tankers, three thousand gallons or more. And those areas are primarily uh areas that the port have in Saint Thomas. We're still carving out some in Saint John and in Saint Croix. Saint Croix and Saint John is up and running, we're still trying to carve out some space in Saint Thomas. But unless you are somebody into the heavy equipment business, you you're going up to Saint John, whether to do a job or what have you. Or or in Saint Croix, you need a little area to put your material, put your billing supplies, put what have you, which you don't have to use it, but if you need a place to do that, we provide that that area in which you could do these things. Red Hook Bad Ramp for Passenger Fee, Non Driver. The driver and one passenger over the age of twelve will not be charged the occupant fee. A new fee of two dollars per passenger will be applied at the Bad Ramp. This fee applies to all passengers except the driver and one lone passenger over the age of twelve. This fee does not apply to passengers under twelve years of age. The proposed fee is twelve dollars per passenger, the driver and one passenger, just like we talked about, will not be charged. This is a new fee that we've been discussing. And of probably of all the discussion we had last night, I believe that this probably would have been the one that was uh most talked about, very lively and very robust in our discussion. That's good, we've been attention, yeah, that's good. Guys, thanks for the correction, Munifa. The proposed new Viper Marine Tariff Fees Paid Parking, Paid Parking in Crowsby. The paid parking lot at the Victor Sewer Marine Facility in Crowsby, Saint John will be converted to a paid parking facility with competitive rates starting January one of twenty twenty-six. The benefits of the paid parking, affordable parking in the tongue area, fee would help maintain a lot and improve Saint John Port facilities. Limiting overnight and long-term parking in a lot will create more essential parking space for those doing business in Crowsby. Um uh that's the rates there, where we're suggesting that um there's a zero to thirty minutes. In other words, if you had to run into the post office and I heard it loud and clear, they were saying that you can't do your transaction in thirty minutes, so we all that. But anyhow, uh that's what we're proposing, and thirty-one minutes and so forth, uh five dollars over nine hours. And um during the same discussion, I know a lady referenced that, well, let her hurry up, leave the meeting last night because she parked in another facility, a paid parking in Saint John. And for the couple hours, the four hours, what have you, she said she had to pay twenty dollars uh to leave, and that's a private facility. But certainly, um one of the factors that we have to consider in Saint John, we know there is limited space, that's a fact. We have folks that use this facility, this is right in front of the post office, right in the creek area. Park the vehicles there all day. Go to Saint Thomas, folks have even parked a vehicle and go off island for weeks. And at the same time, the same residents want to do any transaction in the tongue area, have really no place to park, or they go in one of these other facilities. Again, that um, you know, took up quite a bit of discussion and debate, and that's fine, that's what we're here for. Next. The infatuation of the proposed amendments, January one, twenty twenty-six. And um just like I think I mentioned last night, there's nothing written in concrete that this has to happen January one for several reasons. Um I know our board had expected uh take of this issue even um quite some time before, but there are some issues where they, we couldn't, we didn't have a board meeting, and so it kind of pushed things back. But um that's the date that we uh were proposing that we would do this and we'll see what happens. Viper needs to generate approximately five million dollars through proposed changes to our existing marine fees as well as to the introduction of new fees. This revenue will be used to support essential marine operations and projects that we provide. The request funds will help finance critical improvements, ensure routine maintenance of our seaports facilities, and cover the rising costs associated with the operation and capital expenditures. Legislation on other marine activities. I just pretty say not to try to draw some analysis as to um what somebody making or what we making. But all of us in this community probably know by now, the legislature took action. And they say that everybody in the government cannot make less than thirty-five thousand dollars. The port authority went forward and in fact have started a process to institute the mandate from the legislature. That mandate came with a cost. We're gonna follow the law and we will implement the cost. The other um bill, there are a bill there, that's a bill. And I I I use this bill only because, folks. Um one of the senators, Senator Buckeyes, he did a press release talking about the fees that we charging. But this is his proposal, that the legislature had some time recently and they kind of held on to it vis a vis at another point in time. And in this proposal, the containers that uh that comes in and tropical shipping, whoever, bringing containers. The current law says that a hundred, a forty-foot container, they will be assessed a hundred dollars, that's the current law. A fifty-foot container would be, a twenty-foot container would be assessed fifty dollars. And that money is collected by the Virgin Islands Government. The policy to increase rates as follow. Containers and flat racks up to thirty-nine feet from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars. Containers and flat racks forty feet will be increased from one hundred dollars to a hundred dollars. Contaminants that measure forty-five feet and and above will be two hundred and five dollars. So this is currently pending before the legislature. The one that illustration was before too, as it reverted back to when um express release and comment was that the port authority raising all these fees going punish, and this is what he used punish Saint John. Well, when this happens, you have enough of your colleagues to do this. Tropical and Crowley and everybody doing container, I wouldn't believe you're gonna sit back and say, thank you very much, we love you so much. So we go swallow this cost. So I I don't want us to, um let us be frank. And what my frankness is telling me is that, look, we understand why we have to do this. And I'm not saying that it's any time, any um kind of whatever intention or fine. But now you see that the, this is fine, because all of them come with a cost. And we will continue to make our choice for what we believe we have to do at the authority. This has been US Virgin Islands Cruise Ship Act of twenty twenty two and twenty twenty six. The reason we go at length to try to make sure we provide this information is because we really pay the bills. Light it or not, in the Virgin Islands, primarily because of tourism product, that's what pays the bills, primarily. So the more we could enhance that product, is it better for the territory? Let me declare about that once more. Outside of what Vince used to do and and um line three and all of these things, those are no longer in play. The rum revenue that we get, which is the internal margin fund that we get, that's a a big part of our economy. But what is in this territory is the tourism product. In coming, we expect that in fiscal year, and this is projected, we expect to have about two hundred and six cars. When we had um in in twenty five, we had seventy eight, Saint John, we expect about three ship cars. Saint Roy had thirty six, so you could see that's a considerable um G in terms of what's uh coming up there in terms of the traffic. Waiko uh last fiscal year twenty five was two hundred and seventy seven. They expect that they'll see about three hundred and sixty seven uh ship cars. Total in uh Saint Thomas would be six hundred and fifty three uh for the twenty twenty six coming season, which last year was four ninety one. In Saint Crown, in twenty five, they had ninety seven cars that would increase to a hundred and thirteen cars. And it goes through the entire year, you could kind of look and see. Who ships going to Saint Croy for over twenty five years before um we had our discussion with them, went to Saint Croy for over twenty five years for free. And the government thought, and there was nothing bad about it, I figure, well, if we don't have this fee, we'll encourage more people to come, more cruise ships to come. And that didn't work out so well. So the port authority, because they come into our facility in Saint Thomas, so we went ahead. And what we were able to do is have a discussion and uh we agreed to a five dollar uh per person ship car in Saint Croy. That five dollars a few months back went to from five to seven dollars. And in Saint Croy, there was always, there was also a fee that was put on for to assist with some of these projects that we talk about. And some of the fees, the capital cost recovery charge, which we call the C C R C in Saint Thomas, in fiscal year, we collected some four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And in um uh twenty twenty four was two point one million, Saint Croy two hundred and fifty four. And in Saint uh Saint Croy was ten point two million, and overall some twelve point four eight million. And the port, the port fees, or these was in order to assist the Charlotte Amali Harbour dredging. So this is a different fee altogether. So the the cruise ships that coming in to the territory, see the bottom that says Saint Thomas, that fee is only collected in Saint Thomas for dredging projects that we're doing and we expect to do in the harbour. The harbour dredging, the central government provided the port authority some seventeen million dollars. That will, that will not be the end all and cost of that project. That project would exceed that by quite a bit. So in order to do that dredging, and people in this community know that there was a spirited discussion also with the Colesines, um why we have to pay the three dollars, this is a from the tariff that they normally pay. But um we come to a place where that the port authority will institute a three dollar fee. And that fee is primarily for the major dredging projects we have to do in uh the Charlotte Amali Harbour. At the same time, the port authority and Royal Caribbean agreed to a fee done in uh what we call a capital cost recovery for up upland development costs. We expect to do a a major uh development in Kwangmi, the port authority, the Caribbean and a company called C T I, which stands for Coast Terminal International. We have um gotten together and decided that we want to bill out and make uh Kwangmi a more um that a bigger attraction than it currently is. So as a result of that, the work to be done down there and dredging to be done and construction to be done. We have a discussion, or we had a discussion, and that's where that uh five dollar fee set out and apart from any chart, which can only use for that project. So we agree that there'll be a capital cost recovery, and that's only charged to Royal Caribbean passengers only that comes in to Saint Thomas. All funds collected from seaport operations are allocated to the maintenance and the operation of all our Viper port facilities. The Virgin Port Authority marine fees, and it was established through legislation that calls for us to do exactly what we're doing tonight, which is to have a public hearing, have a discussion with the public, get your feedback, get your input, and then we move on. The new fees become effective according to the date approved by the Virgin Islands Port Authority governing board. The changes proposed at this hearing will be effective January twenty twenty six. And Viper's marine tariff is available on our website, so you could go and look and see um those fees that we just uh discussed. At this point, the port authority, in some fashion of order, just we kind of raise your hand. Munifa have a microphone that she will allow you to ask um questions, and um we'll go from there.
Who's first tonight? She put her hand up for that, okay. Before you speak, please state your name for the record.
Kristen Cox, resident of Saint John. I have a whole list of questions, about twenty. So I will start with the toll booth, toll booth fees, basically like passing go and monopoly in Red Hook. Anyone coming home to Saint Thomas or Saint Croy has the ability to fly in, be picked up by a family member or a friend, and not pay a fee to get home. Your fees through the airlines are built into your airline tickets or arriving and landing at the Port Authority airports. Saint John residents, we don't have that luxury. We have to either pay a taxi at twenty five dollars per person or more, depending on your taxi driver and how much they feel like charging you because they think you have more money than the next person. Or in addition to your luggage fees, then you get to the ferry. Of course, we have to show our I D for our six dollar ticket to Saint John, plus our luggage bag fees. So all in all, it's about eighty dollars for us as a single person, per person, to get home to Saint John. And that doesn't matter if you're five years old or you're eighty four years old. We have fees, okay? Barge fees, passing through go for a car, they don't charge you three dollars, they charge you four dollars. If you have a tiny little two door car, that's a four cylinder, they charge you three dollars, but everyone's charged four dollars or more. Okay, our, we have to pay a barge fee if we're not taking a taxi, which is forty dollars one way, sixty five round trip. Okay, so those fees are incurred in addition to your friends or family picking you up and giving you a ride home. As far as two dollars extra per person in the vehicle. If I need help carrying something because I need to come to Saint Thomas and buy a dresser, or get a new bed for my granddaughter because she's graduated out of her crib and going into a toddler bed or a twin sized bed. My daughter comes with me and I have to pay two dollars in addition each way for my granddaughter and my daughter in my vehicle because we're coming on the barge and not taking the passenger ferry. It's not acceptable. Fees, if you have a five passenger car, you should be allowed five passengers in your car with no extra fees. Thank you. My list. I don't want to overtake the the meeting, so I'll let other people ask questions in between, but I have twenty items between two pages here. Um the cargo containers, I'm glad to see that we have numbers of for the amount of ships that come in for each port, Saint Croy and Saint Thomas, but Saint John is the breadbasket of the Virgin Islands, and we seem to be funding everybody's projects across the board, whether it be Wapa, the hospital, the roads, uh Public Works, waste management, our capital improvement funds for Saint John go to our garbage. We're paying for everything, we have the highest property tax bills, we are taxed on top of taxed on top of taxed for everything. It is not fair that we have these little burdens of, oh, it's two dollars here, it's two dollars there. If you want to come to Saint John for dinner, you get to go and park at the terminal in Red Hook to come over for a few hours. If you have a dead battery, you can come back to the terminal in the morning and get your car for thirty dollars. What justifies the difference of fifty dollars after nine hours in Saint John? Because Saint John is the breadbasket and that's where the rich people live? No, I'm sorry, we have a handful of people that are millionaires and billionaires, but the rest of us four thousand plus residents are not millionaires. We are not made up of money, we get paychecks, we pay our taxes, we pay gross receipts, we pay our employment taxes, we file our taxes. Why are we being the ones that are burdened to pay the taxes for everything? That's my first set of questions, I'll hand over to, I'm waiting for some more questions, so I can some more.
Um let me just be clear and correct you on one issue, and I'm talking about the port authority. I'm not here representing the central government, I'm representing the Virgin Islands Port Authority. So let's be clear with that, and the reason I say that is, I want to make sure some of the information, because it's all over, that we, is going out proper. In terms of the port authority, the most monies our marine division makes at the port authority. And this, you saw the numbers from the cruise ship passenger movement. Showing you that Saint John was thirty six cruise cars under the mini, the small ships, this here will be empty. But in Saint Thomas, we're looking at between Waiko and Kwangmi, probably in the neighborhood about one point six million passengers. So I just want us to declare that, and in marine part of the Virgin Islands Port Authority, that's where the bulk of our money comes from. The bulk of the money don't come from Saint Croy and the marine side, nor from Saint John. That's where it come, that's none, that's where it comes from, you know, I'll give you another opportunity, but you're referring there, just want to be clear that we all understand. And we're not just speaking to ourselves in here, but outside of here as as well. The um badges, the badge fee, just like I said um last night, nineteen years, none of those fees move and be half of the port authority, that's a fact. However, during the nineteen year period, the badges that you get on every day to go back and forth, those same badges, whether for fuel, maintenance, whatever the reasons were, during the nineteen year period, they raise their fees more than twice. That's a fact. So during the nineteen year period, the badges that use in our facilities, every day hitting the ducks, every, as a matter of fact, we had to kind of dredge that area, we have to do maintenance dredging so that they don't be grounded right there by Red Hook. So all the time, they've made their, they do their transaction and their business from in there. They needed to raise their fees according to them for fuel, for whatever the purpose was, during the nineteen year period, they did more than once. But at the same time, that nineteen year period, our costs going in there continue to be the same. Next.
It is I, Marjorie Smith from Smiths Ferry. Um I'm kind of glad I I was preceded by the young lady from Saint John, for the reason being that the things that I have to say is my question to port, was it in within your feasibility study or your determination to raise the fees over, in some cases, a hundred percent? Um was it considered the impact that it would have on the community? Because what this young lady is saying is exactly what's going to happen when our fees go from a dollar to two dollars and fifty cents. It was originally supposed to be three dollars, so I thank you guys for the fifty cents decrease. But when we discussed it, um it's not that we, the ferry operators disagreed with the purpose of port authority raising their fees, we we agree, everything is going up. So um we just disagree with the jump that it's going. So not a dollar to a dollar twenty five cents or a dollar fifty cents, which was where I said we could sustain ourselves because we have budgets as well that we have to look at, because anything that's gonna put a strain on our budget then becomes part of what we now are gonna charge the public. Then we have more people like complaining as to the cost of living, because the cost of living is going up. But to understand what we do is to then understand why raising like this is going to damage what we do. And not so much damage, but we're gonna have to pass it on. And the B V I, you've made reference to the B V I's departure tax being twenty dollars, they collect that themselves. So even though it's there and it becomes a part of your travel experience, they're collecting it themselves. So the government bears the burden of the public looking at what they're paying for. Um you don't collect yours yourself, we collect it for you, and at no charge, by the way. But um at the end of the day, it still becomes part of the customer's experience. So understanding what we do since Covid and just before Covid, um what it takes for us to run a ferry. It's not just the fuel costs, you don't know the barge and what they deal with, but I can tell you um an actuation pump for one of our engines used to be two, three thousand dollars. It's now nine thousand dollars for one pump, and of course, there's a one pump on each engine and some boats have three engines, so do the math. An actuation pump goes bad, we're laid up for a couple of days, that's additional money that we're losing. And then we still have to ship it in, now we have tariffs, thank goodness to our new president. And all these things add up. And what happens is we have to eat some of those costs or raise our rates to be able to cushion those costs. And we can't keep raising because then people stop traveling, as it is, we have a slight decrease in travel. In the beginning of the year, I had it penned at around seventeen percent. Our season, January and February of twenty twenty five was the worst that we've had, well, except for Covid. Um it's the worst that we've had in in a couple of years. And we realized a lot of that was, A, our fares are now a hundred and five dollars round trip, not including um the B V I fees, which is an additional thirty dollars, but so we have less people traveling. And then Tortola is expanding their airport, they haven't started yet, but they are now have an arrival of their American jet, which increased to four flights a day, five on weekends. At seventy passengers on each flight, do the math, that's where our passengers left, and that's why you got a little less money from us in January and February of this year. Um the eleven dollars per person, um which was your ship dues, warfage outbound, we're we're not squabbling about that. If it has to go up, it has to go up, it gets passed on to the customer, that's a bad part of the thing. But a dollar a foot, we're looking at crippling companies like myself. Um but also, in particular, I'm gonna use this example, Q E four, the same But also in particular, I'm going to use this example, QE four, the Saint Croix ferry. Because bear in mind, although all these vessels, all these companies, Smiths Ferry, Native Sun, they're privately owned, we do a public service. Because other than getting to Saint John, getting to Saint Croix, yeah, there's some flights, but at what cost are the flights? So we try to keep our fares as low as possible because we're the 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 basis of transportation here in the Virgin Islands. We serve our people. We've done so for over forty years. More so in some other cases, but take the QE four ferry, the hundred foot long. So presently, they pay two hundred dollars a day because they don't pay the warfage dues and the ship dues and things like that because they're inter-island. But they pay a hundred dollars for Saint Croix, a hundred dollars for here for docking. If this goes to two dollars and fifty cent, they're going to be paying five hundred a day. That vessel carries fifty-six passengers at its max. And I can tell you, because we manage it, they, ten people, twelve people, other than Carnival, Christmas and Ag Fair, that vessel is never full. So you go to paying five hundred a day for just that one small company, you're going to cripple it. My company, my vessel that I use right now, I'm four million dollars in the hole. I just built a new vessel. So I got to pay that debt, but also if I go from paying seventy-five dollars a day for I Legend, that's the new vessel, I'm going to be paying you a hundred and eighty-seven dollars a day at two dollars and fifty cents. Is that what I worked out? Let me check my notes. So if I do that at twenty-one days a month, because that's how many days, well, that's the average days that I do per month. Yeah, so it comes out to a hundred and eighty-seven fifty a day, almost four thousand dollars a month and forty-seven thousand dollars a year. That has to come from somewhere. If my budget is already set and expanded, all I have to do is break a shaft, lose an actuation pump, any of those small features that may be small to you. It's not like a vehicle that you go and pay for a fuel pump, three or four hundred dollars and a mechanic install it. So you're a thousand dollars in the hole. For us, not just the loss of revenue from the boat not running, but we're like twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars in the hole just for a minor repair. So all of these things have to be taken into consideration because then we put that extra cost on the customer, then we start losing customers and we're all losing, every last one of us.
Thanks, Mar.
Thanks, um. You can call me Carlton. Thanks, Marjorie. Um, let me just hold a second, um, hold a second, and Marjorie, thank you so much, right? But let me go back to the eight dollar fee that we're talking about. We appreciate you, appreciate you guys collecting it for us, frankly. But if you could recall, since you're gone, they are going to, oh, God, since you're gone there. So let's be, let's be, let's be fair. Okay, no, and I mean, ain't I got you. So I'm saying, we we're just having a discourse so that the public and everybody would understand that when we went to the eight dollars, the ferry company used that opportunity to put down two dollars for themselves. We did, let me finish. Well, what do you want to say?
There there are three, four companies that go to the BVI. If you come and I collect a dollar for a BVI port fee and send another company, bring back the majority of passengers, they're now at law. So at the end of the year,
at the end of the year, that extra two dollars is used up just in passenger. Where we are trying to realize what's going on, and that's why I didn't even say anything about the eleven dollars, because I totally understand. And to me, I would rather see that happen, even though it's going to affect the passenger directly. I would rather see that happen because now that we've looked at our numbers for your fees, we could go to say, okay, so for fee eleven, we'll do twelve. And we won't. But it takes a loss when, if my boat breaks down and I took a hundred people to Tortola, a hundred and fifty people come back with another company. They didn't collect that port fee for a hundred. So one of two things would have to happen. We would either have to say, okay, fine, um, let's just stop collecting it all in advance because we realize that all of those passengers don't come back with us and that extra two dollars, what, it made me two, three thousand dollars by the end of the year? There's some months we lose, there's some months we gain. But we can collect it separately. At the end of the day, it still goes to the customer.
My only, thanks, thanks, Ms. Smith. But all I was saying is, the port fee, regardless of what the companies used it for, the fact is, all it was eighty dollars. At the end of the day, it became ten. And even when they called and said, Jesus Christ, I got to ten, we we said, yes, we accept it as part of us. So I just, okay, so the eight, yeah, most of it, no problem. But I just wanted us to make sure that all the fee eight and the other two dollars was put on there, for whatever, for whatever reason. But let me just, you you're right to, Ms. Smith, about a couple of things that we understand, you know? I have people, friends, family who is involved in these boats and so forth, so. But the Port Authority have three pilot boats in Saint Thomas, another three in Saint Croix as well. We replacing pilot boats, we we just say, no, I'm looking to replace two of the pilot boats. These pilot boats is vital for the very same discussion we have. So I, we know the cost. And I mean, so when we have to change out, which we have done on and on, so we feel the pain, but in fact, the matter, some of what you explained there, we undergo not to the extent to as large as you, because our boats are, you know, smaller, we could probably change out our board, what have you. But we do have those kind, some of those very same cars. So we all have, you know, those cars to con contend with. But I want to be, I don't want, I want to take my time and be clear with what you said in particular, which is the BVI fee, you don't have problems with that. The the BVI fee, I just asking, I mean, it's not not gotcha, I'm just trying to be clear so that our our no, no, no. What I'm asking you, our proposed fee and the BVI, for the BVI traffic that was asked you, whether or not you had a concern about, or you were okay with that? Correct?
Yeah. It's not to two dollars.
What can suggest?
No more than a dollar fifty. So if you like less.
Let me be clear. That's no, I mean, because when you say no more than a dollar fifty, what what the, what a total going to be? So shall we talk about fifty cents? Okay, we we're going to come, we're going to come to you, um. One second, one second, I want, do we talking specific to this fee that you read? I want to make sure I'm clear with her. So at least in your estimation, your, what you're saying to us is, hey, the BVI fee, nothing. But the 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 fee of one dollar now, that that should go to one fifty if we doing anything. Go go by fifty cent, just to be clear, if we do, if if we doing something. Okay. And what other fee we were discussing there? I think that was it, that those are the two that, okay, but and then I glad to know that you invest in, you see, I mean, I'm being sincere about this, that you and I know what you guys do. I see the movement. I'm glad that you invest in some of four million dollars you said in a vessel. And I suspect part of the, I mean, that's your business, that's you guys' livelihood. And so that investment is because you looking at market and hoping that, hey, somewhere along the line, I'm going to be able to get some kind of return on my investment, correct? That's what we do that for.
What was, and it's not just the port fear that's going on, BVI, you know, it's going to be in another medium just like this. And I totally get what's going on with the world. But we have to see where we can meet each other in some way, fashion or form, because, you know, like how proud you are of the young people coming back. That's the same way we do, you know, all of our captains are global. I'm a captain, my sons are both captains. I expect my grandsons will be captains. So I want to see that. And the only way we can continue that is if we maintain a sustainable business. But we can't, we have to look at what these markets can bear. We can't keep putting it over and putting it over saying we got, we need this.
I thank you and I appreciate your frank discussion and remarks. I guess at least recognizing that some fees have to, you know, be implemented. So I I respect that. And I look at the traffic, the cruise passenger traffic in the harbor. And during that time, there's a time of the year when when things really flourishing, and I I like to see it. The movement that these same passengers that come on the cruise ship, some of the same vessels move these people throughout the territory. So I like to see it. I'm not saying you particular, but we like to see it. So while we could increase the flow of people coming to our facility, that also benefit the people that's in the marine industry in total. And so we really appreciate that. Now we're going to go to the next person. What we're going to do, we'll take a few and then we'll come right back to you, okay? Because we know you have twenty.
Um. My thing is, right, I hear you keep talking about the tourists, the tourists and bringing the people. But what about we the people, you know? I keep implementing our kind of extra fee. So you're trying to tell me on top of a badge, quite traverse to Saint John on top of the badge, I put two dollars extra. Or put, you just point some things, right? Because ain't as if a a breaking down anything or a a a messing up the ecosystem for our ocean. Why you point that implement on top of? We don't know the V I either starting with two dollars, just like our four bill, the two dollars and it'll go up and we don't
either say go one thing, but it's I own benefit knowing that
ah, you know, the government pulling out its money, so I trying to secure I own. Okay, that don't make sense to me. Now, to the BVI, all right? And one thing a BVI to do is implement a environmental fee. Why I don't implement a environmental fee for even the cruise ship people that are coming here, right? And the BVI too, because all I, I'm quite sure majority of all people them from BVI, but we feeling and just because she said, the young lady say, that going up too. So when that go up, it go up and we the people are secure, you know? Though when you go on top of the badge, you're not paying nothing, you know? You get your parking, you understand? But are you looking up? Say hell, I'm finished before I yet. I'm finished. Real talk, all I talking about is the people tourism, but what about we the people at the V I who keep paying I you every day, I come for something new. And then when it go up, it don't go down. Eh? What about us? When I go and think about us, you ain't one of us? You wasn't one of us? Can I get what I get? And now I forget that, say, oh, just a little bit of this, it's just like, when she go up, it just say Wapa. I know the thing that going on with Venezuela right now. Cuba, Venezuela, we get our gas or fuel from Venezuela, which America is a fuel with. So when they know, we not co-host, eh? They start playing and bamboozling it. I, God don't wear pajamas, you know? God don't wear pajamas, Mr. Dow. Why don't you take your salary and cut it down and help contribute and pay for every two dollars you want to implement? What extra, if you, so I guess when we driving a car, everybody in a passenger should charge two thousand, I guess that's why I'm going to say next, eh? Make it make sense. God ain't finished it all yet. And hell, I'm finished before I yet too.
Thank you for your comments and, um.
I'll be there.
Next.
Good evening, Jacqueline Winter, Native Sun. Just to piggyback on what Marjorie said, Native Sun operates tours for the ship for cruise ship excursions. So we're hitting three docks. So if you take that to three dollars or even that two fifty, my boats are ninety feet, so I'm hitting Charlotte, Molly, Crown Bay, Bay. So presently, I'm paying two seventy if I hit those three. And if I go above the the food stand, that's another ninety dollars. So if you take it from two seventy to two dollars and fifty cents, that would be eight hundred and ten dollars for me. For one day. Hence the reason why we are asking for that consideration. We don't have a problem with it being raised. And it could be done in increments. So we take it to one fifty and at some point you set a date where it could go to two docks. Because we know how things are. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Winter. We appreciate your comments. And again, just like we said, we will continue to listen and think the discussions under consideration. So I want to make sure I'm clear that in terms of what Ms. Smith was saying, that you also concord that fifty cents could work for you. All right, next.
Hi, good night. My name is Janelle Alexis Jackson. I had a question because I was following the meeting last night and following the meeting here today and looking through the printouts of the presentation. The cruise calls that are coming into Saint John, are those considered part of that special rate that is afforded to the cruise ships in total, like with the port calls from Saint Thomas and Saint Croix?
Definitely the same of the fees when you go up to Saint John, as you paint Saint Thomas.
Okay.
The only distinction is what's needed in Saint Croix.
Understood. That being said, knowing that the Cruise Bay Dock is one of the most high-traffic areas for the residents in this district. Going back and forth, yes, they go to Saint Croix, yes, they go to the BVI from Red Hook. That is one of the most high-traffic areas and it has the most degradation to this present moment. What priorities have been given? Because I didn't see a cost analysis in this or any type of projected costs or plans to prioritize that project. And in those ranking of priorities, what discussions, if any, were had with some of the cruise cruise ships or those companies to offset those costs, like what you're doing with tropical shipping, like what you're doing at Royal Caribbean here, to have those developments to ensure that that dock for those residents who have to traverse back and forth on a daily, sometimes multi basis in one day can have a sub, some kind of like state-of-the-art, don't have to be state-of-the-art, but a substandard facility that they can get back and forth. Because that's the one that requires the most work. And in the scope of all of these other capital projects, it's one of the smallest projects or one of the smallest issues to fix, in my opinion.
I'll allow Mr. Descartes to respond to that as quickly, okay?
No problem. Thank you for the question. In regards to the Saint John Dock, it is, so if I had to compare it to the rest of the facilities that we showed on the list, it is pretty much the first one out the door for us in terms of design. So we have some of the other projects that we shown, like things like Crown Bay that was recently awarded. Those projects were put together not based on the structural assessment, but also the cargo operations for that site and that particular grant that is focused towards the movement of goods to and from the territory. But in regards to the structural assessment, Saint John's Dock is the priority. And it was the first one that we immediately started working on design on. One of the challenges that we've had in the territory is getting marine contractors to do that types of work is very challenging to get talented contractors to do that work. We recently had a project in Saint Croix where we had to terminate the contract because simply put, the contractor couldn't get a specific portion of that project completed the way that our consultants intended for them to. So to avoid um, to avoid hopefully the same mistakes in this particular project, one of the things that we're doing is we're packaging it up with some other projects. Um, to create just kind of a bigger and more attractive project package, um, for our contractor to tackle and hopefully, uh, hopefully attract a better contractor. But as part of that package, Saint John would be the first one as part of the facilities for them to tackle.
Okay, I understand that, but I just want to clarify, in the scope of all that, providing a lucrative package, um, having that package, so the issue isn't the cost of it. The issue is being, being lucrative for contractors. Is that correct or?
Well, lu- lucrative in terms of their mobilization to the territory, if, if they do in fact have to mobilize to the territory and there's not a local contractor that can do it. Um, it's more looking at the total value of that contract and the, the, the worth, you know, how worthwhile it is to mobilize to the territory. Um, did I answer your question? I don't know if I totally got to.
No, but I, I just want to reiterate my concern. Yes, it's to have that facility completely renovated and restructured and be useful to the residents of Saint John priority, not just the visitors, but the residents. And not just Saint Johnians, but Tomians, Crucians, because we all are one Virgin Islands. But what I'm asking is that in the midst of all of that, it requires a lot of work over the course of maybe like the next two to four years. And so in knowing that that is a high priority for you guys, what conversations have been had, if any, to offset those costs to bring that project forward on a faster timeline if possible, because that deeply affects them. Not just, it affects us all, but it affects them more so than the Tomians or the Crucians. And so those priorities, as it relates to the cruise ports, as it relates to the container ports, those have a higher cost. In my opinion, it should have been easier, not to say that I'm a subject matter expert, because I'm not. It should have been easier for you guys to prioritize that, to bring that project to completion for all of us.
Thanks, I'm sorry. But anyhow, um, just to be direct, um, miss, um, that project is a priority. Once the project is, uh, designed and ready to actually be constructed, we don't have a problem financing a project. Okay? We deport authority. So just like, and that goes right back to our marine fees. Going back to the fees, whoever, the fees is for the operation, maintenance and wherever the port. Depends on how large the project is, we might try, whether we have a partner, whoever, but once that's designed, the port authority will be, will be prepared to, uh, do the work that's necessary. We understand how significant that, uh, property is for the residents, of course, and for the visitors alike. So we're prepared to do that project.
My last point, I just want to clarify, and it's from my edification and the public. Um, with that particular location, uh, yes, it is a high traffic area, but also, Lord, I lost my train of thought. Um, I was asking along the lines of trying to figure out, because that project, or give me the, the context or the timeline of the development of that project, because whether you go just for Saint John Festival, whether you go on a daily basis back and forth, that particular facility has been under construction for a very long time. So what is the timeline? Like, walk us through the timeline very briefly.
Well, I, I don't know that I can do that tonight only because, um, we have our, what we call our, um, marine consultant that's doing the design. It's going to, uh, be in terms of when we get a design. And that's when we could get back to you personally and in terms of again, um, the scottis take the, the lady. Um, number, we'll communicate back with you in terms of what we believe is a timeline to do the project, because it's going to go to design and so forth. And of course, uh, he alluded to it in terms of the kind of, uh, contractors. We don't have a, I mean, normally those kind of marine projects take quite a bit in terms of the, the contractors that would bid on the projects. Okay? So we'll get back to you on that for, 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 um, for sure. Next.
Yes, good night. Nathan Vissel, Saint John. Um, I do not have a twenty point list, uh, but I, I do have three concerns. Um, the first of which actually dovetails with what this woman was just bringing up. I don't know if this would be a question for the young man that shared earlier, or you, Mister Dow, uh, in regards to the, um, Boines Terminal. I didn't realize this whole time, because I, I commute very regularly, that that area was closed off because safety concerns, is that why? Um, it seems as soon as the dock was expanded, that has been closed off. That, that particular terminal, we just had a major project on it. Every day walking by, uh, barricades to get on the boat. And I'm very curious why when originally assessing the scope of work to that, that no one assessed underneath the dock to see there was enough structural damage there to warrant closing it off? Like, I'm gonna caveat this with, I am not a structural engineer, but I am a construction contractor. And that's just in my line of work, common sense. And it, for people that commute back and forth, we're hard hit by these continued projects. First, we, there was all the mess on the dock. Then the bathrooms at the other terminal were closed and we'd have to go all the way out to, uh, attempt like a porta potty situation. And now we're looking at this. Honestly, with all the other proposed changes, it's, um, it's disruptive. It's not my biggest concern, but I am curious what happened there, um, or if it just wasn't considered a concern. Uh, I don't know if you want to answer that now or after I really, um, as far as my, my chief two concerns tonight. The per passenger proposed fee for the car barge. I understand. Look, you're never gonna get no pushback from proposing fees. You gotta expect that anytime, right? It doesn't matter. Justified and sensible it is. Cost of living has gone up. Cost of everything has gone up. And while it's great that the, the, uh, barge fees haven't, or the, uh, ramp fees haven't gone up in nineteen years, you know, the car barge itself has gone up twice in five. You know, from thirty-five round trip to fifty round trip to sixty-five round trip. So for me, that travels all the time, whether it's to pick up materials, go to work, whatever, I pay round trip in my truck. And if I have to bring helpers, whatever, but I'm still working. I'm more concerned with, uh, the fact John has to Saint Thomas for everything. And that includes church groups for church function, that's elderly people on a fixed income, that is, uh, youth sports teams, which travel is a big group, specifically because it can be the only cost effective way to do anything, school related stuff for anyone, for children over the age of twelve. That becomes unabsorbable, because these are all like very fixed income organizations and like, that is sometimes the only workaround for the cost prohibitive nature of having to travel back and forth between Saint John and Saint Thomas. Like it is already, as this woman shared already, it's, it's hit after hit after hit just to get back there. And with, with all these proposed fees, my concern is that these costs will be passed on for everything, whether it's vendors, you know, having to import their goods or grocers having to get their food over there. And it just, I think there is better ways to generate revenue, because I know it has to come from somewhere, than hitting passengers coming on the car barge. Truly. And as the, my final get concern is the sewer marine lot. Uh, if you've ever had the pleasure of trying to park in Cruz Bay, um, I could tell you it's an ordeal. That is the second to last open parking we have. And the, and the last parking lot we have that's like centrally located that you can get all your stuff done. Um, I don't, I mean, it's a convoluted, it's a, it's a multi-layered problem for parking. You're not, you're, you're only one, one piece of a bigger puzzle. You can only do what you, you can do. If you do go ahead with the parking lot, I would strongly urge, um, I think it's only twenty-six, twenty-eight potential, uh, spots in that lot. Make them all rentable for all the people and maybe not reserve any for officials. Uh, custom, well, customs already takes a whole line, but, uh, you know, you, the number of times I missed a boat trying to park in Red Hook lot, but there's a whole side of VIPA reserved lot, um, parking spots that are empty. I understand you gotta do your official duties, but I think there could be a different system worked out, like you pay the ticket and then get comped or something. Um, and maybe a self-serve kiosk, not an arm bar situation that gets a ticket, because that is also where our, um, hospital boat is lodged. And I hate to think of someone needing desperate medical attention, waiting to get a ticket and an arm bar to get on the boat to then go to Schneider. Um, with these proposed projects, I do hope that the bidding process will be open and transparent and you are prioritizing local contractors in the territory before we explore other options. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, um, to let you know that all, not some, all of the projects the Port Authority do prior to anything is on our website. And, um, we have a procure, procurement and contracting office. It'll go directly to them electronically and that's how it's done. So you could run the website tonight and you'll be able to see what projects we have, uh, out there to bid. And that's how we, 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 um, we do it. Okay? And depends on the magnitude or what the problem project might be, we would utilize sometimes the local media to assist with, um, getting it out there. Yep. So I appreciate, uh, your comments, your concerns and the, you know, the things that you said, but we knew that, um, and just going right back, and I hear you loud and clear. But at the same time, we knew that what we were putting up at Cruz Bay and the Loredon Boines Dock, from what the professionals were saying to us, that what we were, what we were setting up on the top, uh, could, could in fact be sustained. Um, but they are the same time, remember all the residents, well, most of the residents, we continue to hear the cries. You got to stand up out in the sun, the rain, the weather, down there is no generator, down there is no restroom facility. So we try at the same time to try to accommodate that. But like I said, that project would be out of the gate and we wouldn't be out there trying to figure out how we're gonna do it. That would be a project. Internally, we would be prepared to move on as soon as we possibly can. Yes, sir, I'm wonderful.
I just wanted to add, when he goes to the website to visit our procurement system, you can sign up for notifications when we do post new bids. And those notifications will come directly to your email address that you provide. So you don't have to check the website all the time. It comes straight to you. Okay?
Good evening. I'm Lorelei Monsanto from Saint John. I am so happy that you have these pictures up here. Mister Dow, are you aware that four of those parking spaces to the fronts are already given to someone for a agreement with the government, Mister Hoffman, that those are his parking spaces in Cruz Bay?
The spaces where? In the front, the way you come out of the dock?
No. These four spaces right here. Those belong to Paul Hoffman.
Well, that's fine. The Port Authority, I'm telling you straight up, the Port Authority have nothing to do it, given we didn't give no space to Mister Hartman or anybody, just.
Before your time, so I, I'm not blaming you. I'm just bringing it to your attention that those spaces were given, written in law to Mister Hoffman when he built his building as you come off of the dock in Cruz Bay. So those four spaces don't belong to you. If he wants to claim them at any time, he can. He has not done so because the community of Saint John kicked up a fuss. So I want you to be aware of that. I want to thank you for bringing to everyone's awareness that Senator Bulkes had also put in legislation to increase the fees. I want to give you kudos for that, to bringing that to the people's attention. Also, in reference to our dock, I think we're getting confused with the dock and the creek and the different things. We have three areas on Saint John that's under your purview, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The dock, as we all know it, is crumbling underneath. And you all received, that was the scope of your work when you received the first allotment, when you went out to bid for this project. It was part of that, because you knew that underneath the building was crumbling. Don't shake your head, no, because we know. Okay? So, and, and you, you pointed out there and Ian asked an excellent question last night. As we move forward in doing things with VIPA, there is no mechanism for income off of that dock. You haven't done that to bring income to yourself. You only want to keep hurting us. That's how we feel. In reference to the creek, the creek brings in the tourists from the cruise ship. They stay out in the sun. They have no, not, it's not clean. It's unattractive. It's, it's just nasty looking that we bring our guests into that area on a constant. So I would love to see what your grand idea is going to be for that, when the national park dredged supposedly their side of an entire harbor, which made no sense to me, and I'm not an engineer either. Why do we not dredge at the same time and save money and effort? Again, we're doing things that are being kind of weird. He brought an excellent point up in reference to the ambulance boat. It's sitting right there in the picture. You know, how are we going to address that? You know, we, we, we are a smaller community on Saint John. We welcome and we know that you are going to increase fees, but they need to be something that is realistic. Everyone who was sitting here who has a business, I heard you guys, I was listening from yesterday and today. And I said, you know what? I'm gonna come down there and say what I have to say. This is impacting the entire community of the Virgin Islands. Everybody's livelihood is being touched by this. And you have to be cognizant in what you're doing. And I want you all to realize that there are things that happened before your time that you all need to understand that is actually out there. So when you're making rules and regulations and moving and saying, oh, we're gonna do this and do that, for God's sakes, remember them four spaces belong to Attorney Paul Hoffman. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Monsanto.
You're gonna go in order, which you may change, please.
Um, Calista Floyd, Saint Thomas. Uh, Mister Dow, good ideas. In the end, you're gonna have to raise fees. My question is, why now? And why in such a drastic way? Because like Laurie always say, it affecting not only the community and coming from the disaster recovery side. A lot of things not set in stone, but I'll leave it at that. Um, it is, it, I don't think that we got a real money problem, you know? I think we got a management problem and not the Port Authority now in general. Because the amount of monies and funds that I keep here throwing around, monies for the dredging of the harbor, monies for this, monies for that. It drives us crazy because we can't follow money like how government and the authorities and everybody follow. But unfortunately, I go that following the money. My, my thing is the people can't be the ones who feel the brunt of it every single time. And these fees are gonna affect every single person in, in, in the territory. So it must be for a reason. Because effectively, this is a, a dominance now that you can't get away from. I say, no. We need to probably go back to the drawing board and try to figure out a way of cutting waste, fraud, abuse, and generate those funds that everybody not just going willy nilly. And then come back and say, well, we have cut A, B, C, D, E, and we have come up with three point five million. Instead of making the people take those hits every single time. And some of us don't really feel the hits. I don't really travel to, to Saint John that much. I didn't even know the barge raising five years. But for the people that do, it gonna affect them. And the people that come down every other day, it gonna affect them. And if it affects them, then we got to be concerned. And what I, 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 I see, that four spaces for Hoffman that, that, that rubbed me wrong. Nobody supposed to got no fool. Nobody supposed to got no four spaces allotted in the law from the long time. And the port can't have separate dealings and can't say, this is my port. Then what about our port? When we, when will we have a say? Because now that I turn on to this, I gonna go, I gonna try to figure out the full space. Yeah, nobody supposed to have no allotment of full, I don't care who it is it be. And that got to be revisited and that lager to change or he got to go. Because you cannot have special interests while the people suffering. So my thing isn't about the fees per se. My thing is about finding a workaround to get to that money. And there's ways to get to the money. If you want me to sit with you and join you, we could do it. Cut back all the waste, fraud and abuse. These things that going on all across the government that everybody know about, but nobody wanna talk about. And if I sit with you, I know we could find a way. Because there are some things that are happening at the ports that can be dealt with, that you can make a windfall. Tourism is one, and tourism rife with it. That's why people move in left or right. But at the end of the day, you cannot put fees on the people of the territory and think you're not gonna get no pushback when they have been getting fees for years. And that's a fact. Now, let me get to the numbers. The fifty cents what she talked about, not bad. But when you give a fifty cents in the Virgin Islands, you'll never get it back and it keeps on going and going and going. And that's a fact. So, I'll come up with these great ideas and vision, the people first just once. And then you realize that if you could find a way, instead of taxing them, maybe reduce the cost and tax something else that is of no use. Like four spaces to somebody just because the name Hoffman, alright?
Uh, thank you. Just, um, I want to, I want to make sure that, um, um, based on what you, you just said, right? Fine, Ms. Harley will get your number. So you could come and sit and tell us about these, um, you know, what other ideas in terms of how we gonna raise money. At the end of the day, if it, if people have the way to include the cruise ships, nobody wants to pay you. She'll have your number and we'll be able to have a discussion. But I still want to be clear about something, because we're not talking only to ourselves, that in fact, everybody that uses our facilities is what is who pays the bills and who continue to make their living, a lot of them. Most people make their living through our facilities. No two ways, no question about that. So just understand that all, and you know, it's so interesting. Some people, la- last night when they referenced, well, thirty-six vessels going up to St. John, versus eighty-one person in the audience, why are you getting all the people here for? So while the folks are running towards water, towards wherever go see, man, are you hurry up, bring some more people to the territory? So that's sometimes the mixed signals, but just like I said earlier, everybody pay. The cruise ship, and I know most of you in this room would know that there was a big issue, it was public, it was headlines, as to the fight the Port Authority was having with the cruise line. There's no secret about it. We went up there, we had a discussion with them, and we told them too, that they too have to pay. And if you know anything about the institutions, they're not small. But at the end of the day, we went, I suspect we made our case and tell them why they have to do this. And, um, and in most instances, it was a negotiating, um, peace that we were able to come to and have everyone pay. The fees that the cruise ship passengers are paying, when I came here to this authority, is not what is, the, the same, they're paying today. So it's not about them voices also you're going, just punish the local people. Saying everybody that utilizes our facilities participate. And I enjoy the fact that, well, I appreciate the fact that in our candor, at least two of the companies that uses our facilities quite a bit back and forth to BVI, doing tours from the same cruise ship passengers and all what they do is like, hey, we just believe it's a little steep. But we, eh, we are not objecting of some kind of increase. And, and we welcome the discussion and the discourse. Um, next, um.
Tony Hendricks, Rotten Fast Ferry. Yeah, Director Dow, um, you know, I understand that you, you, the board, the board members, you know, with this proposal, I think they understand that they gonna, uh, you gonna pull up a fight with, you go, it's like, uh, you know, bidding. Because that 250 that they came up with, that, um, Smith, she got a semi-five foot boat, native Sonny got ninety, we got a hundred. So we paying a hundred dollars to back and feed. Now, you going up there, um, with a proposed one, we would be paying 250. Plus, we got a Red Hook running. When we stop in St. John, we gotta pay, I'll be dropping off in St. John, clearing, coming to Red Hook, we gotta pay. So, um, uh, um, like March agree, came up with a proposal of 150, I go along with 150. But 125, it will even be better for us. I'm telling you, that's all, that's all I got to mention. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Hendricks, excuse me, address retired Captain Hendricks. Um, I appreciate the fact that, and that's at least two of the companies that utilizes our facility. But at the same time, the Port Authority work with folks. Because in fact, certain requests made, hey, we need to operate, we need to use your facility. We work with people as well, because we understand that that's in fact, we respect the fact that that's the daily bread and how people, a lot of people make a, a, a living. So, um, I really appreciate the candor in which you guys approach this thing and understanding that something, you know, a longer fee structure that we talk about. Think we go to the BVI and we hearing some other proposal. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, good evening. My name is Imani Danila from the Constitutional Convention. I have a myriad of comments and questions, but I will kind of take breaks to create space for others. The first, um, were just some little pointed questions to get out of the way. Um, and last time's meeting, there was, it seems to be a miscalculation about the attendance. You know, St. John shows up and shows up big, so there just wasn't enough space. But you did, Director Dow, um, graciously offered to go back to St. John, either Thursday or Friday. And so I just wanted to know if there was an update on the logistics from that meeting to give folks who weren't able to get in, an update?
Well, we definitely have some mixed signals, because some of the same folks said, hey, we came in after and we were able to ask some question. But we could look at us to a date when we'll go back out there. Tomorrow, I know we head to, to St. Croix.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, I thought it was Thursday or Friday that you offered, because I know a lot of people left. Also, like, a lot of the things on my list are from St. Johnians who weren't able to get into the meeting. So that's why I was asking if you had been able to figure out when you would go back. But communicating that, I think that the St. Johnians would go a long way. Um, the second thing I wanted to clarify is the origin of this proposal, because I think there's been several different comments about where it originated. Did it originate within the team of the Port Authority and was sent to the board? Or did it originate at the board and now you all are bringing it to the public?
Okay, um, that's a excellent question, because when somebody made a reference some minute ago about the board, no. Um, normally, any board member could have an idea, but that's not how it started. It started with the staff having discussions and we would take that discussion to the board. In order for us to have this public meeting tonight, it means the board had to authorize us to come and have this public meeting. So the next thing would be, um, we go back, we assess things, listen to, just like somebody discourse here tonight. And then we ultimately take what we believe to the same governing body and they'll have a decision to make as well. That's how it works.
Right. So have you made a decision and proposed it all yet?
Wait, slow.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Right. I was just clarifying of where we are in the process. So the question that I had is, so the staff came up with the proposal. I understand that you all are going to take our feedback and probably go back to the board. The question is, has the board already voted on this matter?
No, what the vote, what the board did is vote to authorize us to have this discussion. And, and just like I went through, the process is exactly that. The board authorized us to have this, this discussion. The law mandates that we have this discussion. From the feedback and the discussion back and forth. And we said it in the beginning, but some people would laugh over it. I don't believe you guys, and that's fine. But I am only, I can only tell you what I know that process is. And the reason why we're taking the feedback and having the discussion is so that we ourselves could look at it and made a, make a determination as to what we ultimately propose. So more direct, the board has not, uh, voted for us tomorrow, January sixth, twenty-sixth, to institute these fees.
Okay, cool. And I just really appreciate the clarity, because I want to, you know, especially on Facebook, you know how like the VI goes? Like, there's just so many different perspectives on it, to make sure we're being precise. So I'm just gonna start with my first point, which is centered around the theme of justice, okay? And anybody who knows me knows that I have been in the Virgin Islands, like a lot of entities. The Port Authority is actually usually never on the list. I think that your staff and my personal experience is genuinely kind and quite, and quite competent. And I really do mean that. And so that is why I think this proposal has been so perplexing to me. And I'm looking at it from several different lenses, because I genuinely want us to come to solution, so that it's a win for Port Authority, but also a manageable burden on the people of the Virgin Islands, right? And so it's interesting that this team came up with a proposal, but it seems like you all didn't ask any of the subsequent questions that you were specifically employed to ask, which would be, what are the unintended consequences of these decisions on Virgin Islanders? Or how will this affect our own people, very, uh, very, very islands, at very different socioeconomic levels? And for those who support for necessity instead of for leisure? And so what really bothers me about this entire experience is that the assumption that I'm making now is that the principle of you, you know, right? Who are competent and kind and employed by the Port Authority is that it's not a guiding principle behind every decision that the Port Authority makes to think about how these decisions are going to affect Virgin Islanders. And so I have several specific questions for you. And then I also have some suggested solutions for you as well, based on the comments from last night, right? And so the first is that you should segment your users for leisure and for necessity. And that is what almost every tourism-based society does. And it would, and then the second part of that is that you turn the narrative of the Port Authority into a purpose-driven business. Because when, every study will tell you that when all of the things are equal, a purpose-driven business will generate more revenue than just a profit-driven business. And so if you say, come up with some can buy, you come so we could stay or something like that, we raise the rates on these passengers specifically going to St. John and let them know that the reason that they are paying more as visitors is so that we do not continue the disenfranchisement and displacement of St. Johnians. That one is a cultural builder, right? Like, you are now controlling the narrative of why it is so important for visitors to carry the burden and go to St. Johnians. And that is something valid for the ability of Port Authority to do. And you would trendsetters in the Virgin Islands for it, for claiming this new narrative, right? A very practical suggestion is to partner with the DMB. But lessons of St. John, you could easily just get a plaque and sticker that goes on your car. And so you're now exempt from those fees. Because if you ask me, and honestly, the people of the Virgin Islands did ask me with my elected position, that we, the people of St. John deserve a discount at your port. They deserve a stipend for travel as reparations for the unconstitutional disenfranchisement of the government. Now, that is a bigger conversation than what we're having here, but Port Authority does have a big role to play in that. And if you want to change the values of this organization to be one of equity and justice and controlling the narrative, you could set a different tone here. And it would benefit, you all would make so much more money and it wouldn't come from the people. So that's, that's the first of the actual specific recommendations. The other thing I want to genuinely, and I also want you, if you could ask me, answer Nathan's question at the end of this, right? The other thing that is interesting that Mr. Floyd asked is why now and why to this degree? And now I'm listening to the BVI voters, I, I do genuinely wonder, did you all shoot so high with the rate so that like now it seems like we're negotiating? Because now we talk, and I say this with all due respect, because it is a negotiation tactic, because now you've gotten fifty cents as a, as a call to your 250, right? We've got St. Johnians coming to bargain with you, so maybe not the passenger, maybe just the money fee. And so I'm genuinely curious what the strategy is here, because I definitely don't believe that none of the Virgin Islanders here, that St. John be kicking up and that the BVI tour, tour operators wouldn't be kicking up. This is a, a heavy economic burden for us to carry, to carry. And then the final recommendation on this point, and then I will pass the mic and then come back to the financial side of this conversation, is that I feel like if you cannot prioritize outside investment, which should always be your first priority, taxing your people is lazy governance. And I'm not saying that that is you all, because you're not a governance, you are a autonomous company. But if you can't get it from outside, then I would say that you should prioritize collective fees, something that will be spread among all of the islands or, uh, all of the goods that we're experiencing. But to go to individuals specifically on St. John is a no-no. So I'm, and then, so if you could respond to some of those points and some of the ideas are presented, I will also come to your office and talk with you all pro bono, because I do genuinely want you to have revenue so that we can have updated ports, but I also don't want it to be a burden on the people who simply comforted. And then also, if you could respond to Nathan's question, I'm genuinely curious about what happened with the original St. John ferry dock improvement? And why did the bottom of the ferry dock not get improved when we also improved the top part? Because I do think that's an important part of project management.
Alright, um, thanks. You went a lot of places, so I, but, um.
By list if it's helpful.
What, what, what I'll tell you is this, in terms of transparency, we are now talking to the public at large, right? We are talking to the public at large and part of this discussion with the public at large is the kind of thing that we're hearing and the feedback we're getting. And just like I said numerous times, all that discussion that we have some control over would be taken into consideration. That's what I said from the beginning and I've repeated it several times. Now, let me go, you, you referenced the, the ferry companies. They are the people that currently operates at our facility. So we thought, we didn't have no agreement, no side deal to go up and I gonna come in. That didn't happen. What I can tell you happened is we have a responsibility. My staff met with the ferry companies and said, hey, here's what we're thinking about. And they had a discussion, nobody settled on any fee. We still isn't settled on a fee tonight. That's what they are proposing that we might do. And we are open to listen. Similarly, and when you said from outside in, I said last night and I'm saying again tonight, we went and met with Crowley Company. We met with Tropical. And like I said earlier, we met with the cruise lines. This was public information where myself and staff flew up there, when they themselves was pushing back and paying the fees. That was public. So we didn't, our thing isn't just taking or trying to get some fee from only the local people. We went to the, to the corporate offices and had those discussions and tell them why it's important. Because they make a lot of money from this territory. So why is it important for you to invest in this territory? So I want to be clear about that, so it's not just, well, we just gone to St. John. We went, everybody that utilizes our facilities, that's what we did. And I'll just end and I'll go to someone else to make sure that we understand. It's not us against them, me against you. What it is at the end of the day, is the Port Authority saying, pay what we proposing. We said early on, we are listening to you right now. If it was a done deal, we wouldn't even been here. So it's not, nothing about us that we want. So it's not nothing about us that we want your input. And so, um, we appreciate your input regardless of what your input might be, whether we agree or we don't. Um, yes, sir. I think I answered that already. I told, I told the gentleman one of the calculations at, you're talking about the German, eh?
What happens with the bottom?
I was going up top, the, the, for example, put in the restroom, they were kind of small in the, in the scheme of things. Um, the legislature appropriated some one, uh, million dollars to do certain things and that's what we did. That was a li- sorry. Yeah, that was a legislative, um, action. And we knew that what we were putting in wasn't like some real heavy structure that would be problematic. At the same time, we were trying to make sure there was some shade, some restroom, because that's one of the only facility the Port Authority have that had no restroom facility at all. The other part of that was, uh, making sure that, um, with the situation of how the power stuff been going, folks, the, the agents inside those little booths, uh, we heard the complaints loud and clear. The power been going off and on all the time, they have to be in there, no, no, nothing in terms of backup. So, um, like I said earlier, today we started to put in a new generator that would be able to accommodate that. So that's what went behind that. Next.
Hey, good night, everybody. Uh, my name is Riddell Hodge Jr. I'm also a delegate for the Sixth Constitution Convention. Um, in light of the Virgin Islands Port Authority stated goal to generate five million dollars in new annual revenue um, effective January first, twenty twenty six, and regarding the authorities' use of public-private partnerships, I require the following information for the public record. What are the exact repayment terms, including the interest rates for the Crowley and Tropical Shipping partnership? So what is the exact repayment term? Because you says alone, it has to be repaid back eventually, you have to get around the, the specific details about that transaction. What's the repayment term and the interest rate for that public-private partnership with Crowley and Tropical Shipping? Next, to justify the stated goals of generating an approximate five million dollars in new annual revenue, uh, can you provide the detailed itemized financial analysis and methodology that breaks down the projected five million dollars in revenue contributions from each? Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I see, sorry. To justify the stated goal of generating an approximate five million in new annual revenue, please provide the detailed itemized financial analysis and methodology that breaks down the projected five million in revenue contributions from each of the proposed fee adjustments and new fees, including the estimated volume and resulting revenue from the rental badge ram fee, the new non-driver passenger fee, the cargo overflow staging fees, the B V I international passenger fees, docking fees, postage fee, and the new paid parking system at Cruzby. And lastly, are there any specific active public-private partnership projects currently under consideration for Saint John?
Uh, thank you. That's you will submit that to us in writing so that we could respond to that is a lot. But what I can't tell, what I, what I, what you know, I'm serious, I'm not, I'm going to respond to it. But, um, what I, I, I can say to you, um, and we, you quoted five million dollars in, in your discussion. And tonight, we don't know what the final, uh, the final analysis is going to be in terms of what a number going to be, based on what the discussions that we are dealing with in terms of, we had these fees just like we, at some rate. And it's only when we finalize what we're doing, then we would know what the true cost is in terms of what we expect to, to, uh, get from that proposal. But submitted in writing and we'll respond to you. We appreciate your concern and your comment. Ms. Smith, what, um, so I'll tell you, Ms. Smith, we will go to you and then we will go to the lady for us. Okay, okay, sorry, sorry. We'll, we'll do Ms. Smith and then we go back to you, Ms., okay?
Um, I think this was a question we had asked the last time, ten years ago, eleven years ago. Why can't the port collect their own fees the way the B V I collects their fees?
Well, you guys, you do, you're doing a bit frank with you, uh, and if you did believe that, hey, you know, we collecting for the administration fee, well, we'll have to talk about that differently. But the fact is, the folks come to you, um, you know, uh, to purchase the ticket. The other, we, one of the reasons that we really, uh, doesn't really want to do that had quite a bit to do with, you know, having to get new, you know, more personnel, you know, more everything just to, to do the fee. And, I mean, you guys have been doing excellent job for us.
Yeah, well.
So we, um.
Well, that, that, that makes sense.
So we appreciate it.
It, it's easier than the, because in Tortola, I, sometimes we book faster than the Port Authority can collect. So there, there's a long line of people waiting. So I could see where it makes sense. So maybe the discussion has to be how to, um, be compensated for it in some way, fashion or form. And in essence, for the last eleven years, because of the two dollars, we were compensated um, in some way, fashion or form. So, but that was a question.
Thanks, thanks.
Yes, we, um, provided a presentation tonight is on the back page of your presentation. All questions can be submitted in writing to info, I N F O, at V I port dot com. It's on the contact us page on the back of the presentation.
Hi, good night. This is, um, I'm just asking a very general question and it's Zara Bunnar, resident. I'm a V I res, V I resident, just not representing anyone but me. Um, Zara Bunnar, B U N N E R. The, um, the new fees become effective according to the date approved by V I P A Board of Governors. Can you name the Board of Governors just for the public and all the people watching? Because even if it's available, I just would like to have that on the record. Um, and can we, um, is the board meeting public that we could be part of that board meeting when they are making this decision? Because when she asked that question, has this decision already been made? Because I think most people feel the decision has already been made and that this is political theater. So I'm not insulting anyone and or insinuating it that it is, but we know in the V I that that is unknown. It feels like a done deal. So you're saying it's not? So you're saying the board is going to vote on it and that it's going to become effective January first to twenty twenty six? If this is voted on, when is that happening? And and who is voting? So all of our concerns are going to be just, um, determined by the members of the board and can you name the members of the board? And I'm sure it's found on the website, but I just wanted it on public record and for the people watching. And can we write to those board members and can we participate in that board meeting? Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay, so let me just go back a little bit and appreciate the question that you asked. First, let me start with the, um, board members. The Port Authority is governed by a nine-member body by law. Currently, we have seven members. Uh, by law, there are four individuals that, that are on the Port Authority's governing board because of the position in government. One being the Commissioner of Public Works, Mr. Derek Gabriel. Another one being whoever chairs the Economic Development Co-, uh, Commission is automatically on the board, again, that's by law, which is Mr. Kevin Rodriguez. The, whoever is the Attorney General of the Virgin Islands is on the board, which is, uh, Mr. Gordon Ray. Ex- Esquire, that's the Attorney General. And, um, the other, um, is whoever is the Commissioner of Tourism is on the board, which is the new, um, lady, Ms. Jennifer Matarangas King. That's the four by law that's on the board. The other breakdown of the board based on law is two individuals, private sector from St. Croix. Uh, two individuals from St. Thomas Private and the two individuals in St. Croix. Currently, we have one who is the Chair of the Board, Mr. Willard John, as the chairperson of the board. So there is a vacancy over in that. I'm getting there. In St. Croix, like I said, it would have been two private sector. We have a vacancy for one currently is Mr. Willard John, who is the Chair of the Board. And in St. Thomas, we have, um, two private sector, which would be, um, Celestino White Senior. And we have one vacancy in St. Thomas. So there's two vacancies we have. And in Saint John, by law, there is one representative from Saint John, which is Ms. Leona Smith. So that comprise of the seven people that's currently sitting. And if you want, the meetings are open to the public. I believe Monifor does an excellent job in informing the public and putting it out there as to when our meetings are. Our meetings are normally held the third Wednesday of every month. However, if something come up, you know, somebody have something to do or what might happen, the board can determine that we'll move the meeting to some other day. So, um.
Um, I'm, Mr. Rush is indicating that the meetings are public. They are, um, available on Zoom. The link is always on our website, V I port dot com. Um, it's under the About Us section, you'll have a section that says Board and the link is there every month. On the third Wednesday of the month is usually the board meeting. If there's a change, we also indicate that on as well. Yes, and to contact them in writing is the same email address, info at V I port dot com. It's usually the third Wednesday at ten A M.
And yes, uh, any, if you want to, um, be able to have a discussion with the board, you're free to do that as well. What you would do is make, uh, your request in writing and, um, the chief of staff is Holly. She also is the one that coordinates meetings for the board or with the board. And that's how that works, all right? Good.
Um, good evening, the old members for Crowley. Uh, I don't know if this question is for you personally or the Chief Engineer. Uh, I saw the PowerPoint presentation about the crane in St. Croix, uh, it's getting replaced. Uh, is that, um, is that a plan that you, that, that BIPO has to acquire a new crane? Or that's, that's just an idea?
No, no, it's, it's not the idea. As a matter of fact, the crane in St. Croix is by the port. Crowley in particular don't have a crane in St. Croix. So Crowley, so the person that own the crane in St. Croix again is the port. They lease the crane to Tropical Shipping. And Tropical Shipping in turn does work operation there and then charge Crowley some kind of fee to use it. But Tropical pays the port, will lease it, the crane to operate it and maintain it for us. And, um, so Crowley in St. Croix, you, the movement of any crane is on behalf of the port and Tropical Shipping. Now, yes, we expect to replace it. The cost of the crane, we have already started to, uh, you know, look at, at getting the crane. So the cost of that crane is someplace around seven million dollars. And, um, we all know that that crane is thirty-some odd years old. Parts ain't been made for that any longer. And the people that maintain it for us is, uh, Tropical Shipping. And in St. Thomas, there are two cranes in St. Thomas. Those two crane though is owned by Tropical. And so Tropical, uh, they control that crane and those two cranes will be replaced, not by the Port Authority, but by Tropical.
Okay, but for St. Croix will be BIPO, right? For St. Croix, the country crane, the thirty-year-old country crane will be by BIPO.
Yeah, that's what we intend, but I just want to be frank. And that's why sometime we have this, this discussion. We hope and continue to pray that we, a lot of our young people, um, go understand the operation, they're always looking. If you cooperate a crane, you could get higher tomorrow. And so, um, it makes sense for us to, um, probably whether Crowley or whoever that have the weary tal, because um, the resources that yourself and Tropical would have in terms of other facilities that you manage much bigger than this port, uh, the mechanics, the folk that would need to repair it. Um, we look towards, uh, in this case, in St. Croix, Tropical to do that, uh, for us and maintain it. So it would be whether it's a lease agreement with them maintaining it or operating to what have you. But those are things we have not, um, sat with them and discussed. But that's how, um, the crane structures are here. And these are the same cranes will lift up the containers to take through all the territory and sometimes other Caribbean islands as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No, I'm on Santa. A follow-up question based off of his question in St. Croix. Did you say that, well, can you repeat what you said in reference to who owns the crane in St. Croix? Are you the owner, you lease it to Tropical?
That's correct. The, the owner of the crane in St. Croix purchased by the Virgin Islands Port Authority over some, uh, years ago.
And you lease it to Tropical, who then leases it to them?
No, Tropical, well, if they want, for example, let me just show you how down there, it's called a container port, right? Public container, a ship comes in with a bunch of containers on it. There's one crane over there. The Port Authority, which anybody who want to use that crane and does a business can use it. But for a fee, the Port Authority have no one that operates the crane. So for a hundred years, we have a lease in arrangement, because a lot of the cargo that comes up is either for Tropical or Crowley in this case, or whoever else. So in this listing arrangement, um, the container will be taken off by some employee of Tropical Shipping or whatever arrangement Crowley and Tropical could work out themselves. But in fact, Crowley will be Tropical for their services. They manage the crane, they operate the crane, they, if parts, excuse me. If parts have to be purchased, what have you, they deal with all of that. But in turn, uh, with the Port Authority, we own the crane, a list in a, an, a leasing arrangement. The, the cranes in St. Thomas are solely owned, the cranes that Tropical operate are owned by Tropical. They purchase them, same situation where they have to be replaced. No, no, no. You wouldn't be able to find that online. I'll talk to our folks and, um, I'll see, I'll, I'll talk to our folks to see what you want to see, the arrangement we have.
Like you said, you lease out and they repair and they manage and then they need to come by us. So I'm just, I'm kind of on the end of it, so.
We appreciate you kind of looking out for us with the liability aspect of things. Yeah, well, I mean, of course, because I told you that, that crane cost seven million dollars that we expect to replace. And that, that entire area there, the gentleman for Crowley could tell you that that entire area there is really, really deteriorated badly, even where the crane run. And that's why we made, we made our case to the federal government and that didn't happen overnight. That took a long time in getting to where we have now, um, been able to get a twenty-two million dollar grant from the United States Department of Transportation. I went to that whole spin we have, so we're going to do that project over there. And we also have another twenty-one million dollars here at the, um, the area where Crowley and Tropical operates as, as well. Yes, ma'am?
Kristen Cox, Saint John resident. Um, so do we have, does Port Authority have a number of the amount of cargo containers that are offloaded ships on a yearly basis in Saint Thomas and Saint Croix?
Um, we could, we could, if you want that information, we could get it for you.
Yes, because.
I won't give to tell you all my head, to be honest with you.
Okay, but there's somebody calculates that and keeps track of those? Because every container that comes in of goods is goods going to Virgin Islanders as a whole.
Not necessarily, okay, sorry, you go ahead. Let me make a note of this one.
So, okay, whether it's someone importing a car because they can't afford Saint Thomas prices or it's a Home Depot container or it is food that is going to Price Smart or cost you less. Things that are shipped in may be going to another location, but the majority of the stuff coming in to our ports are for the survival and livelihood of our Virgin Islanders. And how many of those containers actually are for Saint John and designated for Saint John? And understand, I understand that there are a lot of containers that come through the U S Virgin Islands that are bound for the B V I as well. But every one of those containers that touch our ports, even though the ships are paying a fee. But every one of those containers that touch our ports, even though the ships are paying a fee. If I'm reading the calculations on the chart that you have of a hundred dollars or fifty dollars with these containers. Though the fees are built into the cost of the goods that we're purchasing in the stores. This is double taxation on our goods, okay?
Uh, let me, let me just so we don't go too far down the road and I I remember what is being said. Two things, just for the record. The hundred dollars per container is not the Port Authority. That the central government, the I R B, local folks, that's who collect that money, not the port. Secondly, the proposal that you're referencing is not money to be collected. And these containers coming in for the authority. That's a recommendation that a senator have, has nothing to do with any collection from the Port Authority. Am I clear?
Yes, thank you for clarification on that. Because if we even as Port Authority on those containers add ten dollars to each container. Just a ten dollar fee to a twenty foot container, twenty dollars to a forty foot container. You're going to have heaps of money coming in to the Virgin Islands with every container that is offloaded with these ships.
Yeah, but what I'll tell you, while we don't do containers, the Port Authority gets paid for the cargo that comes in. Yeah.
So is there a financial statement that Port Authority can share with the public? That will show the profit and losses of the incomes coming into the Virgin Islands?
Ask it to do.
Can see?
No problem.
These fees?
And some, most of our financial information is on the very same website you said. But anything specific, then put in writing to us and staff will get back with you. Okay? But um all those containers fees you talk about, and just for the record, uh uh when the when the vessels come in. And I think you you did alluded to that, some goes, they goes all over. Some stays on and go to other Caribbean islands as well. Okay, so thanks.
Hi, Imani Daniel again for part two. Um, okay, so this topic is finances, which was similar to last night. And I did ask for the specific profit and loss statements, revenue and expenses per facility. Which I did confirm that your Port Authority does have. Um, and I did appreciate the response that somebody would get back to me for the request. I did really appreciate that. I think one of the issues that was pointed out last night and then tonight is the lack of fiscal transparency, right? Because even in this conversation, I have yet to be convinced that you all actually needed to raise your rates. Now, if the if the justification is simply we haven't raised them in nineteen years and so we wanted to raise them, okay. But you just provided a little presentation to us about projected losses and capital improvement projects. And this idea that there is a deficit that the rate increase is not necessary for. But I have yet to see any meaningful financial or analysis or feasibility study or data to back that up. And so the first question is, what am I missing? Information did you all use that brought you to these specific numbers that we are now discussing here tonight? That's the first of a couple of questions to get through.
Whatever, just like I told you last night, just put your concern in writing and the staff will get back to you. When not, I would not be able to stand here tonight to get into all of those issues that you were raising. That's what we'll do.
So just even just briefly or succinctly, you can't tell me what metrics your team looked at to get us to this conversation tonight when you put the proposal together, just generally or succinctly?
I'm not going to um try to even ask answer that. I'm telling you that. Put that concern in writing, just like we've said, and we'll get back with you.
Okay, and also because then am I supposed to email that to everybody who came here?
Sorry?
Sorry, let me speak slower. You will get it back to me because I will put it in writing to you. Then is the next step that I am to email out to everyone else who was here?
Well, I mean, that's your choice. I mean, once you send it, I don't, maybe I'm not understanding you. If you want, you send it to Miss Monifor more.
Yes.
And the staff will get it.
Yes, and so then how does it get to the general public? I'm asking this in a town hall setting. So that not just I get the information served, but that you're here to have a conversation with all of us. There's also lots of people online. It's also being recorded by a management for posterity. So that's why I'm asking this in a public space, not just so that I can have it in my email. But so that we can all understand about the financial process of how we got here.
Well, I wouldn't even to tell you how you would get it out. I'm telling you. We have internally, we have a public information officer, which everybody within the port who wants access um to the questions or what have you would be able to see it. Or, you know, wherever the response may be.
Okay, so the second point on fiscal transparency is that on June fourth twenty twenty five, the authority received communication from the F A A. Regarding noncompliance with the requirement to submit any audits within nine months from year end. And the noncompliance is specific to the authority's delinquent fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three audits. That has resulted in the F A A imposing special conditions on the fiscal year twenty twenty five grants from the Port Authority. And so these special conditions stipulate that the F A A is not making grants on fiscal year twenty twenty five grant reimbursement requests. Until the F A A has received all overdue audits. Now, you do keep sending people to the website, which I've poured through over the last night. And it it is from, I think, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty one fiscal audits are available. This is what the F A A was talking about. And so the direct question is, I obviously can't get the financial statements and the audits because the F A A can't even. And so has that been addressed with the F A A with catching up on your financial audits?
This is this.
Oh, thank you.
This is Miss Anna Penney, CFO of the Authority.
Thank you, and that's a genuine question. Thank you, Ms. Penn.
Um, Anna Pen, Chief Financial Officer. While we are behind on audited financials, we do provide every month an internal financial. It's in the board. Every board book every month for that thing. Um, we did fall behind after the hurricanes. We've had a couple of challenges. F A and are working it out. We have twenty two is now online too. We have, well, I'm sorry, twenty one, twenty two should be, we're working together for December. So we do have a plan. We're working through the issues we have um with the hurricanes. Most of our facilities were damaged. We had a big impairment. We have an issue with that. We have an issue with some of our um. Right now, the twenty two main issue for those that do financials is the Gatsby eighty seven with the leases. So that's a big problem we're having. We do a lot of leases and we have to go to each and everyone. So we are working through it. Um, even though we were cited by the F A A. They said it's just a formal. They still have not um implemented it. But we are working through. They have our schedule and we do have a plan. Actually, all my time is basically spent on that right now. That's where we're at.
Right, and I do appreciate that. And and that's something I want to put you on this vibe because I think everything that you've mentioned is valid. But I'm trying to get at is that we as a people have been told that the Port Authority needs money. And you have come to us for money. But you've not provided any fiscal transparency so that we can back up what you were saying. Now, again, your books could show that you don't actually need money and it's still within your purview to raise the rates, but that changes the conversation. And the way that the people organize and resist if we feel that there is something worth resisting. And so when I asked for the financial records, it was not at all for a gotcha. It was because I really wanted to pull through and see if maybe you guys missed something. Or if there's perhaps, sorry, no, you're good, there was perhaps an opportunity. Or to really see what data was used to come up with these numbers. Because again, it's not just me. A lot of other people are still unconvinced that the fees are even necessary. So the the direct question I have to you, Director Dow, is with a straight face to my face. Can you tell me that these fees are absolutely necessary for the continuing operations of the Port Authority?
You straight face to my face to us. I know what's going on. When I start, I respect the public, we know we use it. Listen to them. Don't forget Miss Garden last night. You know, the Scotts of the garden, who is a St. John and tell you, and we feel the pain, the empathy. How she brings uh um one of her um her opponent down to Saint Thomas, got to take the boat. How challenging today is to do dialysis, then to go back. We are human. We heard the cry. And at the same time, she said that her husband, I believe, have a little dementia, so she brings him along. We we heard it. And so, but she still said. She still said, with all of that, I just think your fee is too steep, but you should do something. That's what she said. And so we can't, and that's people that's using the facility, but everybody and those people say we shouldn't pay anything. We hear you too. And that's why the staff and I will go back and assess what the discussions are and come with a recommendation for governing body. You know, and um, well, you know, at the end of the day. All I could do is tell you what we're proposing, but listen to Miss Smith. Listen to Miss Smith, the ferry company is the ones every day using our facility. You're not going to invest in a four million dollar vessel if you don't believe you're going to make a profit. She even talked about, and I just illustrated it because we talk about the eight dollar fee is what we did. The Port Authority get cost and it was no issue to us. They use the opportunity to put down two dollars regardless of what they use it for. We glad that they collected for us. But those are our customers. We communicate with them all the time. If they have pain, we feel the pain. We try to work with them. That's what the Authority have done. But before I go any further, I just want to, because someone referenced um the Legislature Act. And the money that we have, we had gotten from the Legislature. And that was supposed to be a part of repairing underneath the dock. That was mentioned by someone. So I have the legis, oh, by you. Sorry, I didn't remember who. Yeah. Both of us, I knew you long, but that's okay. That's that's an honor. Okay, cool. Anyhow. So this is the Act eighty four oh one that the Legislature passed. Uh, to allow for the work to be done. And it says an act appropriating nine hundred thousand dollars from the Saint John Capital Improvement Fund to the Virgin Islands Port Authority for certain improvement added that. The Laredon, Laredon Boines Senior Doc. Section one of it says the sum of nine hundred. Section one says the sum of nine hundred thousand dollars appropriated in the fiscal year ending September thirty twenty twenty one. From the Saint John Capital Improvements Fund, Title thirty three, subtitle three, chapter one, one. Section three, two zero five seven of the Virgin Islands Code to the Virgin Islands Port Authority for certain improvements at the dock. Resurfacing of the dock to alleviate cracks and pathos to enhance the surface of the pedestrians' travel. Turn new and lighting to improve visibility and security and reducing energy consumption. Three, repairs and expansion of the canopy coverage provide enhanced shade protection during inclement weather. Four, addition of restrooms to the facility. Five, addition of a backup generator. Thus passed by the Legislature of the Virgin Islands, December eleven twenty twenty. That's the extent of this legislation. Not in this legislation, no one was given to the Authority to do any work underneath a facility. Just for the record.
Okay, and I will wrap up with this because I know it's late and we have other um folks that wanted to chat. So um the three takeaways are, one, you guys obviously could do what you want. You have to explore an exemption for the people of Saint John. I don't mind taxing the visitors, you know, you could tax them ten million dollars every time they set foot in the territory and I'd be cool with it. You have to explore an exemption for the people of Saint John. The second thing is, I really think you all need to invest in a meaningful feasibility study. That is backed with strong economics, even if it takes more time. And then three, please try your hardest, Ms. Penn. It sounds like you have dedicated time to it to be fiscally transparent. The people of the Virgin Islands, especially with all these fees we pay, we deserve to see your book, sir, okay? Um, and then finally, because I was told to by my lawyer. Um, I am verbally requesting through V I Code Title Three, Chapter Thirty Three, Subsection Eight Eight One. For the Release of Public Information Act for your fiscal records, and I have put this in writing as well. And I want to confirm that this is not at all for confidential commercial information. It does not violate or disclose trade secrets, okay? So this is genuinely for a request of public information. So sir, you now have ten days to respond, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, and just like you said, I think earlier you begin by saying that you are a member of the Constitutional Convention, correct? That look, I know, you should be proud. I didn't think you'd have gone and you'd be proud to do the work. So some of the things that you're telling us to do or you've, the Constitutional Convention could fix a lot of things, so good luck. Good luck, good luck. And that, um, you know, it's successful. I honestly want it to be because it's been a very, very long time in common. So I hope that it's um, it's a successful um operation. And um please, send your communication and our legal department will look at it and our other folks. And any issue, I mean, we'll we'll provide um what have you. And just for the record, because we're public. Um, our director of engineering is in present today. He's been back and forth all over the place. We've had several meeting with the F A. And at no time, none of our grants been stopped, just for the record. So all these grants and and that's just one grant in agency. But in fact, we also have the United States Department of Transportation. We also have the Economic Development Authority, who gave us some twenty million dollars. And the car rentals that operate at the airport, taking back and cussing, we put it right in here. The party fee, everybody that rents a car from the airport, it's two dollars, that accumulated to a couple million dollars. We use that as our part, the Port Authority part, to build that transportation center you see there today. The only was gravel, and so that's what the port is about. We continue to think outside the box and do things. And and continue, look at, uh, not hitting anyone else. But you are wrong, you and the government, you see what's going on. And this set of people that you see here, understand, we deliver for this public every day. We don't go to the Legislature asking them to please give us thirty million dollars. Please do this here. We can't pay our bills. You might hear all kind of people can't pay the bills, not the Port Authority. Every vendor that works for us, they can't tell you that, hey, I yeah, I'm buying, we ain't got no money, not the Port Authority, just for the record. I'll take two more questions and then um I think um we'll come back to you.
On that point that you can pay, on that point named Zara Bunnar. On that point that you can pay your bills and that your, the parking lot fees collections looks very, looks like it has increased since twenty twenty to twenty twenty five. It looks like all your um, everything else I've seen looks like it has increased as well. Um, then you can pay your bills. I I would suggest, just as a humble resident. That uses the barge, visits family in Saint John regularly, um because I lived there a very long time. Um, I was actually disenfranchised myself and had to move to Saint Thomas because I couldn't afford to live on Saint John anymore. And um I think that's a, I think the four thousand people on Saint John should not be the people that you're trying to piece piece get money from. And I I would say maybe scrap that because these actual seven people, it looks like, that are all government. Workers, they're all part of the government, actually. They're not private citizen. You said you have two from the private sector on this board. That are going to determine this decision. But where, who are the private sector again? Because I I missed that. Are those the two that are that are not filled? Two um positions that are on the board that are not filled? Leona is one pri, so she's representing Saint John, Leona Smith.
Celestino and Miss Little John out of St. Croix.
And Celestino White. Saint Thomas. So those are the private citizens, but they do have background being, working for the government as well. So there's no actual just regular person that is a business owner that is on the board, correct? Just, I just want to clarify.
No, no, but what I'm saying.
These are the people that's going to make that decision.
Correct, that's the people that's on the board, okay, currently.
Currently.
Those people, I tell you, at least for them.
Are required, right, right.
And the other people are chosen not by the Port Authority employees. They are chosen by the governor of the Virgin. They are chosen by the governor of the Virgin Islands and then have to be authorized by the legislature of the Virgin Islands.
So even more so layered into government, that it's even though the Port Authority is not a government agency per se, right? It is, but it's also semi-autonomous. It's autonomous or completely autonomous. Okay. And I'm, I'm happy that it looks like a very positive outcome for you, in your fiscal management so far, even though it's, you know, waiting for the full financials to be disclosed. I don't think the Port Authority is doing a terrible job in myself or anything like that. I'm sure you have to find more money. I would just propose that you wait till you get maybe two more board members since you only operating on seven. And then also propose that you do not tax this on St. John with the four thousand people that are, are making thirty-seven thousand median income. Because the people that live there are not the people that own a lot of the land there. Let's, let's also go to that. The people that own the land that, that raise that, those taxes that raise the, the income even. Because I don't even think people are making thirty-seven thousand a year, all of them. Because it's many, many seniors, disenfranchised folks, people that are not even on the books. And remember, we only had a census in twenty twenty. So four thousand people, you're going to put that burden on. And they're the only people that have to go, that have to, this was a big point last night, pay to go home.
Okay, um, thank you very much for your concern. And again, let me, um, be frank and clear and direct. What we're discussing and your position is valuable to us. We hear you loud and clear. So I don't want you to think we're not dismissing anyone. But at the same time, at the same time, you know, we have our job to do. Just like you said, all the expenses have gone up. It also happened for the Port Authority, all our operating expenses. We pay what millions of dollars. Just so we have to put to, please. So I'm just saying that I'm not going to itemize it. But just like anyone, operational cost goes up. There's a gentleman here told you that twice in five years, the batch freedom went up. That's what he told you. That's what he said, the gentleman there. So I'm not going to one against the other, this and that. We hearing you. We look at these things, we'll, uh, get, we'll carcass among ourselves and then we'll come and make a proposal to our governing body as to what we think based on the discussion that we have held and right now in all the islands. So your input, your input, regardless of what it might have been, regardless if it get a little rough, your input is very valuable to us. I'll take two more and that's it. Please.
This is my final comment. I thank you guys for again having this meeting today. I do hope that you will come back to St. John for those people who were outside, who did not get to communicate, to have that chance. I do also want to say that many years ago, before you even thought about becoming the Director of Viper, they got garvey bonds to build the dock, the little piece of concrete at Red Hook. And they promised the St. Johnians, after it's paid off, you all will not have to pay any more fees. Promised us that. But the money was good. So they said, no, we must continue the rate. So we've been going along with it, going along with it. And the problem is now is that we cannot sustain. Viper has land in Coral Bay. Is there anywhere that you all are willing to lease that land to individuals so that things can happen in that area?
That's an excellent question. You want to lease some tomorrow? I'm serious.
That's tough.
I'm seeing you, you bring a proposal to us, you want to lease some land? We have no economy.
We're talking about revenues and, and how to make things happen. I know you got some acreage in Coral Bay, that's in a, in a location. Maybe we need to make that work.
Do me one favor, okay?
Anything for you.
Laurel, here we go. That's all I can say. No, I'm, I'm serious. The Port Authority, we get proposals all the time. And I'll just say this here, right? Folks, most, a lot of the small businesses in this territory operates from our facilities. Okay? If you go down to Crong Bay and whatever we do, we try to make sure, even in our discussion, I'll tell you the cool side, nothing is, is in concrete. What we insisted in our discussion is that a portion of whatever is going to happen and built here must be a set aside for the people of the Virgin Islands. Most of these local people that operating from the truckers, they lease property from us and so forth. So we do our share in building and trying to bring in new people to enter the economy. So the land we have, we have acreage down there. Do you provide your written proposal to the port as to what you want to do? And the same process holds true, which means we vetted the staff. We have a, a committee meeting on it, look at the proposal, and from there, we make a recommendation whether two of us to the board, they act on it, and it's not, and I'll tell you one other thing. Anybody that does business with the Port Authority will tell you, you're not going to wait years from us or six months from us when you're trying to do a transaction, trying to do board business or what have you, to get an answer from us. You might not always like the answer, but we answer, we will. Answer, we will. And that's what we, that's how we can pledge. Um, I think I want to thank.
I will be nice this time.
I love you every time. Go ahead, sorry.
So you mentioned about the revenue ramp with, um, you know, that help with the two dollars with the car rental and everything, right? So being that they done bill, right? Are you still collecting that same two dollars?
Certainly. And again, it's been, and I, all year, most people that rent from us, or not from us, from the renter, car agencies at the airport, most of them, ninety percent of them are people coming into the territory, not our local population per se. So yes, and the reason why we're still collecting, um, uh, doors fees, there was a toll lane, you saw a toll lane, the taxi drivers have a lane that they could use to go out of the airport, which we expect to develop further. Well, that toll lane that you see there, that's how that was built. So the taxi drivers don't be in the same lane with us. So yes, we plan to continue it because as we develop, I think by now most people should know, we entered into a public-private partnership. Some, uh, we're still walking through all the final deal, but we expect to rebuild a brand new terminal there. All these things are going to help to build a brand new terminal with jet bridges at the King Airport. And we expect to do our entire project in St. Croix with jet bridges as well.
Okay, the next question is, you said vendors have to pay. Are the vendors your friends?
Which vendors we tell?
That you said that they have to pay and they must pay. Are they your friends? That, you know, or so forth? Because you know, we're not.
It's a small community.
Yeah, who you know. Okay, um, last, I don't think it lastly, but it will be lastly, right? We all, okay, I is one government, Port Authority and P N R, right? Right? I mean, in, it, I could bind up together. I can't talk together. Because we have borders out in all harbors, you know, that don't leave our harbors. And I think I could collect money from them too. Eh? Instead of looking at us who's sitting on top of our water, you know, and so for coming on top of our land. I could join together with port, not deep in our, you know, and start collecting money too. What about that?
Well, well, I like you a lot. That's an excellent, no, it's a, it's a good point, but, but I want to, let's, let me, I want to declare. The Port Authority could only do what the Port Authority can do, statutory legally. We have new jurisdiction over the boat that park in the harbor. Uh, from time to time, we may have a little issue where they kind of clogging it up and we have to send our pilot boat to open it up. But no. We have no jurisdiction over that, but it's a discussion. We can, we could certainly take it back to, to the commissioner of, uh, P P N R. We talk from time to time. I really appreciate your concern, your comments, and, um, you know, and I glad you were nice to me this time. I appreciate your comments. So seriously, um, like I, I think the two dollars. Unfortunately, what's interesting, as we wrap up St. Thomas, we'll move on to St. Croix. I tell people all the time, we, we're not going to, we don't have to, uh, agree on everything, but all of your valuable and your comments, we sincerely appreciate them and we'll go back and have a discussion internally. But right in the same room, boy, my back in abroad. Laurel, you're right, getting old. Because I could tell you right in the same room for hours we spent. Most car rental agencies came and tell us why they shouldn't pay, they pay nothing. But they operate prime space. You come out of the airport, you walk and then you get it. It wasn't like that. And they tell us right there fought us to the nail. Okay? But we stood our ground because we know it was for the right thing and the right purpose. Now, everybody could tell you, man, parking garage, nice. We could go away, we could come back. And the same rental car agencies, they park down there, they get the customers and they having a ball. And one of the fights, what, what, one of the fights, you may have to pay more money. But one of the, no, no, I'm, I'm saying, one of the fights that we, that, that, that we took on. And I tell them all the time, a lot of us leave here and travel to, that's in Miami, the land in Miami Airport. You, you walk forever to get to where their car rental station is. We go there, we complaining, you know, we walking. But here is different. As you come out there, you want to get your rent a car. But you want to get your rent a car, but you have to help us pay for you to get your rent a car. And everybody bearing none and the staff here, and he's did an awesome job and they stop. Because she was the person primarily who was the E D A U S when we got a grant. And when they tell us you have to put some money to it, we were creative enough to go from outside in to the parking, um, garage. Folks, we really thank you. We appreciate the conversation with. And I, I'll take two, but not five. Please, this is the last, please. I, I, um, um, I just telling the staff, no, things tight in overtime for none of you. Stop. Sorry, I'll give you two and then please, and you know what? I think we, we good.
Okay, Kristen Cox, St. John resident. After Hurricane Irma, did the Port Authority receive any federal funds for repairs to any of the facilities to help the progress move forward so that the Virgin Islands could recover quickly? And if yes, how much money did you receive?
Thank you for the question. The Port Authority, and that's what, another thing I'm proud of, and I'm glad you ask. We didn't receive no money from Royal Caribbean or any of these places, no grant funding. And one of the first places to come back, like it, twist it, however, but based on the contract that was not with Royal Caribbean, you know what it says? As soon as the port is able only to facilitate a ship, you got to come. So on this ground, one of the first set of people that came in was Royal Caribbean, but not per se with passengers. You know what they came to do? Help restore Maidensby Beach. That's how that was restored, okay? Just for the record. And at the same time, this is how we operate here. The Port Authority, the central government, at the time the hurricane hit, their entire portfolio, all government billing was insured, right? Was to a sudden a move. The Port Authority, we pay for insurance for that reason. So that's what we were able to rebuild. This place here was decimated, airport mashup. There was no federal funds. The federal fund that we got later on was, uh, um, the COVID funding that we had to use at the airport for various, uh, things that demanded we do. So the question to your thing, uh, um, the answer to your question is that the Port Authority received no money to rebuild anything. We did that ourselves. See you later.
Very good.
Thanks.
Something to be proud of.
Sorry.
Um, and so my final question and statement, twofold. Animani's earlier statement about St. Johnians and our infrastructure and how about giving us some money back? Because the cruise ship people that come to the islands wreak havoc on our infrastructure, our sewer systems, our trash, our trash, we don't have what the B V I has and burn our garbage. We've got a dump and every few years the dump catches fire and it gets lower again and we've got a dump. The cruise ships are wreaking havoc and they don't spend the money while you Port Authority are making money. The shops, I used to have a gift shop. When Irma hit, I tried to stay open. It almost bankrupted me and I had to start over, like many people. I gave it up. So we need help as the community and the business sector with the infrastructure that the cruise ship industry is impacting us on and our tax dollars are going for our garbage and our infrastructure breakdown, right down to WAPA. So let's talk about from the community to Port Authority. How do we tax and put that taxation on the cruise ships to bring some more money in to help fix and repair our, our sewer systems, our, our garbage, our infrastructure?
I could do what the port can do. There are certain things that I can't deal with. I think I, the, the central government, I know our Waste Management Authority, they, as a matter of fact, well, the matter of fact, the Port Authority assisted them the best way we can so that they could get a grant for a lot of money to redo the, um, the sewage treatment systems in the territory, a lot of money. Why the money were held up? Why the money, why they, they had an issue getting our money and it's public? It's because of the landfill in St. Croix. And because of the landfill in St. Croix and the challenges they have and did not do what they say for years was going to happen at the landfill in St. Croix. Yes, the F A said to us, Waste Management going to have to pay you guys. And they had set a fee, what they should pay us, and that didn't happen. But because we recognize they wanted to get a lot of money, over half of, over about five hundred million dollars for these systems, we were able to go to the same F A and say, look, they don't have the money. So we could tell them to do it as much as we want. They can't, they can't pay us what they should be paying the Port Authority because they, they lease from us too in St. Croix. What we were able to do though is say, hey, hey, it's how we could package this. And we got our legal people to work along with the F A that ultimately they accepted. So now, because of the agreement we have with Waste Management and the property in St. Croix, they are now eligible and have already notified us that this money to rebuild the entire waste water treatment plant through HUD, um, is available to them. So there's so many ways with the authority. We didn't hold a, a, a strong line with them. Yes, you got to do certain things. But at the same time, hey, it's what you do. So we did help them or the territory in that regard. And sometimes, you know, if I have the same discussion about the cruise ship residents, and I mean, and I'm not pitting one against the other, it's ironic because everybody have a different view. It's just like when they, this ship pull up here. Down there was like Juve money with the safari then. Those are people, whether we like it, they have children in college too. They are small businesses too. They make a living doing that too. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's all of us have to find a way that we could respect each other and be able to survive and do the things to help each other. So as I leave you tonight, I really want to thank each and every one of you. And I really want to thank our staff and all of you for the comment because it's been helpful to us. It's been very helpful to us so that we could regroup and have a discussion and then finally decide what we're going to do. So the people that work for me, you guys know the drill. I expect each and every one of you here, eight o'clock in the morning. Thank you. Have a good night.